All right, please bow your head for a word of prayer. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we do thank you for everything you've done for us, for watching out for us and guiding us. Lord, we do pray that you will give us the wisdom that we need to take care of the things that are in front of us, and we pray that you will just continually watch over and guide us so we can take care of the business of this county and take care of everything that comes before us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Roll call.
Commissioner Coats, Commissioner Laird.
Present.
Commissioner Millen.
Read it.
Hallelujah. Commissioner Nick Lason. Chairman North.
Here. I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, and in its own which we are founded, just as for all.
All right. We'll start out with Joan with EFM. So Joan, are you there?
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, commissioners. It's a pleasure to join you today. I cannot see you, but I will be sharing my screen here shortly. I'm not sure if you can see me or not. I'll just turn on my camera just in case. It's a pleasure to be with you today. Appreciate the opportunity to join you virtually. This is a good opportunity for us to look at your quarterly progress on your portfolio as well as really a look back to your initial investment, which was in the spring of 2024 for just over $40 million. So what we like to do with our quarterly updates is start with just a very, very short market update to give a context of the decisions that we're making around your portfolio. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Can you all see the performance report on the screen?
Yes.
All right, great. I'll just move on to the current market theme. So as a reminder, the Federal Reserve has a dual mandate of having price stability and maximum sustainable employment. So what do we mean by price stability? That means low inflation over the long run and maximum employment being the highest level of employment the economy can sustain over time. So those are really the two data points that the Fed decides uses as their guide for whether they are going to reduce rates or raise rates over time. Keep in mind that this data that I'm presenting today is for the quarter ended December 31st, 2024, but I'll add a little color commentary of kind of where we are today. So at the end of 2024, we felt like there was a soft landing remaining on track. The inflation and labor markets were in line with Fed expectations. We had strong economic growth and the consumer was really driving the economy. Now, since that time, in January, we saw the largest dip in consumers spending over a period of about two years, but really that could just be a slight pullback from December holiday spending. And when you really dive into the numbers, it looks like auto sales was really the number one driver that kind of dragged that down. We did see a Fed easing cycle in 2024, quarter four, which was expected. So even though the Fed cut rates, we did see rates continue to increase based on some uncertainty about the market. We saw Treasury yields respond to monetary and fiscal policies. So we saw maturities between two and 10 years rise from about 60 to 83 basis points during the fourth quarter, and we'll look at the yield spreads here in just a moment. So again, talking about the dual mandate, you can see here with the inflation numbers, the core PCE is really the Fed's preferred measure of inflation. And so you can see where November numbers were 2.8. We did see that tick up in December, and we did see that tick up a little bit in January. So we are seeing the inflation numbers go up. We saw CPI go up to 3% in January. Just as a reminder, core PCE, that's the personal consumption index, but the core takes out food and energy. The unemployment rate was at 4.2 the end of November, at 4.1 the end of December. All in all, 2.2 million jobs were added to the economy in 2024. Just a few things that we're watching in regard to the election and potential policy implications for the Fed. So really, four main areas, taxes, tariffs, immigration, and regulation are really just in the forefront right now of thinking about how that could impact either unemployment or inflation, which are really the two measures that the Fed has their eyes on. So taxes, lower taxes being viewed as positive growth, but negative for the deficit. Tariffs, uncertainty around the scope and scale of tariffs can be viewed oftentimes as inflationary. Immigration, tighter border policies may have adverse effects on the labor market, and easing regulations are generally viewed as positive for growth. So you can kind of see how some of those are impacting the month-over-month percentages and changes in real consumption. So if you look over here on the right-hand side of the screen, you will see that an increase in durable goods spending may have been partially, in part attributed to the pulling forward of spending prior to potential tariffs. So that's just one example of kind of how we're watching what's going on in the economy. This slide I'll just go over quickly. Inflation and growth forecasted really to remain stable. So you can see here the CPI inflation where the dark line is actual, moving us up to the end of December of 2024. The forecast is really just very, very slightly going down and then up into 2025. Same with GDP. We saw the GDP in Q4 at 3.1 and coming in at 2.3 in Q4. Despite 100 basis points of rate cuts, the two-year Treasury really finished nearly unchanged. And so you can look at this chart and kind of see why rates were so volatile at different times during 2024. So really, at the very beginning, in the first quarter, we saw hotter than expected inflation, so that pushed expectations for rate cuts back, which we saw the two-year Treasury bounce up from that. In the second quarter, we saw inflation and labor markets cooling off at a moderate pace, so that changed the Treasury just about 13 basis points. And then in the third quarter, we saw labor markets showing signs of unwelcome cooling. I'm sure you can all recall that August labor report that came in much, much cooler than expected, and so we saw a very volatile rate change there of about over 100 basis points. And then the fourth quarter, despite the Fed cutting 50 basis points in the fourth quarter, expectations for stickier inflation in 2025 drove rates higher. So you can see where we ended up in December of 2024 with the two-year Treasury at 4.24. Now, this latest dot plot again was at the end of December. And so right now, because of the stickier inflation numbers, we're really anticipating the market is really only pricing in now one cut for 2025 and anticipating that first anticipated rate cut for June may be pushed to September. You can see the Treasury yield curve here, even though this is as of the December 31st, 2024, we ironically are really just right around these same numbers, the two-year Treasury being just right around four and a quarter and pushing out to the 30-year at 4.1, I think it was 7.3 or something like that, 4.76 today. But you can also see, if you look at the dotted line and then the blue shaded line, the dotted line shows us where we were actually at the end of September, and then the one-year range of where we've seen rates, all the way from the overnight rate being clear appear under 5.50 and down to about 3 point or 4.31, projected really over the long term, meaning 2025, 2026, more in line at that 3%. These are the fixed income index total returns for Q4. So this is really, you compare in regard to everything, other investment instruments in regard to treasuries. And so here on the very left, you can see that Treasury is at negative 77 basis points. Really, that's demonstrating the sell-off between the two and the 10 because of the volatility in basis points between those two indexes. The Fed's updated summary of economic projections really kind of just gives us an idea of looking back where we thought we were going to be in September and then where we thought things would end up in December. So the lighter shaded show September, the darker shaded show December. As you can see, the GDP was anticipated to be up from September. Unemployment rate pretty steady, right around 4.2%. And then you can see over in the longer run where it's expected to go. So unemployment really not projected to do much, being different than we are today. Down in the lower left-hand corner, however, the PCE inflation, you can see it has ticked up slightly and projected to tick up even more in 2025, and then the Fed funds rate coming down slightly, but not as, not as quickly as first projected. The fixed income sector outlook gives us an idea of where we might see value in Q1 of 2025 for your portfolio. So as you can see, a lot of this is neutral right now, and I'll talk about that as we get a little bit more into your portfolio. So let's jump into that right now. This page gives you a, and we're on page 13 right now, if you're following along with your printed materials. This gives you an idea of the snapshot of your portfolio ending December 31st, 2024. So you're seeing your market value up here in the top left-hand with the effective duration at 2.5 and the benchmark duration at 2.4. Right now, we're really moving along at a neutral duration because of uncertainty about policy decisions and volatility in the market that may affect value for your portfolio. So we're really sticking to a neutral duration right now, and you'll be able to see that down in the lower right-hand corner where we talk about the duration distribution of your portfolio. You can see it's a bit more bulleted with more toward the middle, which gives us the ability to be agile as maturities come off in your portfolio, and then we can look for value in the market with that, what we call dry powder. You can see your sector allocation up here on the right-hand side being treasuries, agency, commercial mortgage-backed securities, commercial paper, agencies, collateral mortgage obligations, some super nationals, and a very, very small amount in what's called our local government investment pool. That is used for maturities that come out of your portfolio, roll into there, and are reinvested out of there. And lastly, I'll point toward the credit quality of your portfolio in the lower left-hand corner. On this page, you can look at your sector allocation review, and you can look back for the last couple of quarters and kind of see where we've made changes into your portfolio. Last time, those of you on the investment committee, we talked a little bit about the total amount of your portfolio in March as opposed to June, September, and December. As you'll see, there is a footnote on the bottom in this white section right here on March of 2024, kind of highlighting it with my arrow. Those were actually trades made in your portfolio on the last day of March that didn't settle until the first day of April. And so it looks like your portfolio is elevated, however, those were just non-settled trades. So the actual total in your portfolio at the end of March was 40.97. There were $7.93 million of trades that settled the first day of March. I know that seems a little bit confusing, but hopefully that clears up the questions that we talked about in the investment committee. So moving forward into the other quarters, you can see where there have been trades made in your portfolio, where we've seen value, and you can see the color-coded bars down on the bottom to give you a visual representation of the different sectors. This slide shows your portfolio activity, net activity by sector. Again, you can see a lot of trade activity in the treasuries and commercial papers. One of the, I'll point out here, the super nationals, this was really a one-off for us. We saw an opportunity for some short-duration supra-nationals that were 20 basis, trading 20 basis points over treasuries. So picked those up. Those are available and eligible through Wyoming State statute. We don't use them a lot, but saw some value there. In the agency CMBS, this, this sector is slowing down a bit, but we've seen some really good performance in past quarters and recently added some floating rate CMBS with coupons that were around 50 basis points over the, what we call the SOFR rate, the secured overnight financing rate. And then again, over on the right-hand side, you can see the total net activity. And this just summarizes the 12 months of activity for your portfolio. So moving on to performance, you can see we always measure our performance against the benchmark. So if you look down to the lower portion where we look at the total return of the portfolio against the benchmark, you can see that we were 13 basis points above the benchmark in Q4 and down two basis points in the third quarter and up in the second quarter. So we're looking at 18 basis points of exceeding the benchmark on performance for the three quarters of 2024. The next slide shows you the accrual base earnings for your portfolio since inception. And so this takes into consideration interest earns, realized gains and losses, and the change in the amortized cost of your overall portfolio. So you can see that that ended up the year at just over $1.5 million. The rest of the report is really just a managed account detail of the securities. We don't always typically include this. This is available on our online portal as you're reconciling your statements, but since we are just kind of new getting started on our quarterly reports with you, we wanted to go ahead and include this in the actual quarterly report so that you can review the individual trades that are made in your portfolio and the quarterly transactions. And I will pause there for any questions.
Joan, you covered that really fast.
Well, I'm happy to slow down in the future. I just, I didn't know how much you had on your agenda today.
That's fine. I appreciate it. Joan, would you be willing to give us kind of an update about every four months or so on this stuff, just so we all know where we're going and where we're sitting with all the changes we've got coming out of Cheyenne and everything else?
Absolutely.
We don't have any idea what they're going to pass or anything else. So I think that would be beneficial to the board to have that information.
Yes, Chairman North, what we typically like to do, and I think we'll be able to get into that rhythm easily in 2025, we do publish our, our performance reports quarterly. So the next performance report will come out, will be ready to be prepared on March 31st. We usually try to schedule a quarterly meeting with you around four to five weeks after the end of the quarter. That gives us time to publish your entire report, calculate your performance, and then get with you to review that. So I'm happy to work with the, you know, the investment committee on that or whoever is appropriate so that we get in a regular cadence of sharing these quarterly reports with you. They look, they will look very similar to this. We'll have a short market report. We'll go over the quarterly performance and anything that's notable for you at that time.
I appreciate that. That's kind of, yeah, to fit it in line with what your, what your normal schedule is would be really good. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And you're right, lots of changes potentially coming down the pike. I know you're going to be discussing some potential changes to your investment policy today and, you know, happy to answer any questions as that evolves as well.
Got any other questions, Joan? I appreciate it, so.
All right. Thank you, Chairman North. Thanks, all of you. I look forward to seeing you hopefully in person next time as weather permits, and thank you for your grace today.
Commissioner Nick Lason has a question.
Absolutely, Commissioner. Yes.
Hi, Joan. Thank you for the presentation. Are you going to sign off or are you going to stick around for the rest of the conversation regarding investments?
I'm happy to stay on.
I, I think after we hear from Troy, we might, if, if it's okay with the commission, have a discussion of the proposed investment policy with both you and Troy here since you both took a look at and actually were involved in some of the discussion around corporates.
Absolutely. Yep, happy to, I was planning to stay on if that's your pleasure, so thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Troy, I think you're up.
Open screen. You want to have me now? All right. Very good. Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Good to see you. I'm Troy Hunt Sucker with Wyoming Class and Peaks Investment Management. We manage a portion of the investments for you as well. I won't go as much into the economic aspect of things as Joan did. She did a very good job, but I will touch on some of it just to recap because it dovetails into what we're doing in your portfolio as well. As I've spoken with some of you in the past and with, with the investment committee as well, some of what we're doing in our portfolio is a little different than what Joan is doing. And so I think that actually the two of us working together as investment advisors concurrently actually complements each other, and there's not a lot of doubling up of efforts. So what you'll see from the two of us are not necessarily two different approaches, but two different investment strategies kind of or investments that are going into, into your portfolio. So to start off with, I do want to recap just a bit of the, where we are economically. As Joan said, inflation is 3% last reported. It has been, however, trending upwards slightly since September of last year. It was a 2.4% last year, but since then, inflation has been trending up ever so slightly. Unemployment is currently at 4%. It was in the mid-3% range in the mid-2000, around spring and summer of 2022, slightly trending up also from its low of April, in April of 2023, also 3.4%. So inflation is trending up, so is unemployment. And as Joan talked about, employment and inflation are the two factors that the Fed considers the most when they consider what they're doing with the interest rates. Payrolls were at $143,000 last month, but growth has been slowing in terms of adding jobs to the US economy. Currently, the Fed funds rate is 4.25 to 4.5%. As she spoke with, the Fed Fund's futures as of this morning is showing that maybe one potential rate cut between now and potentially March of next year. As I said, we're at the 4.2 to 4.5% range. Fed funds rate actually this morning is 4.33%. As of this morning, March of next year, we're showing a Fed funds rate of 3.9%. So what that really means to you is that sometime in the next 12 to 13 months, the market anticipates one more rate cut of 25 basis points. As Joan alluded to, in June, it was expected we would see that rate cut, but that has changed to where it could be September. It could be honestly anytime this year. Six months ago, it was a different conversation as we've discussed. There's a lot of conversation that we could be seeing upwards of 10 rate cuts between, you know, a year and a half, or excuse me, six months ago and the end of the year. Obviously, that's changed. The reason that has changed is because we have seen inflation taking up. The payrolls are still continuing to grow, albeit at a slower rate. Like to point out that inflation started taking up after September of last year. That is before the election. There's been a lot of discussion in terms of the potential tariffs that the president is talking about. So inflation was actually going up before the election, and that has been a trend that has continued. So we expect the Fed to kind of pause for the time being with maybe one more cut this year. The reason that's important for you in terms of your portfolio is because where we are interest rate-wise right now is about where we would expect to be with the caveat that we might see a quarter percent lower at some point in the next 12 months, but this is about where we'd expect to be. So when you're looking at cash flow on the portfolio that we have with you guys in terms of what PFM has, I would think it's safe to say this is where you should be. And as you go into the budget planning process, I would think that a 4% yield is a good conservative number to consider income when you're planning your budget going forward. As most of you are aware, I have been working with Nautrona County since 2007. So while we manage the hospital funds, we do manage some other funds as well. That is a part of your Wyoming class statement as well as your Peaks statement. I know the focus of today's conversation is primarily the hospital funds, which I'll touch on, but in terms of Wyoming class, you see that we have funds, the general fund, the hospital fund, the Nautrona County Emergency Cash Reserve, the Airport Control Tower, and the Advalorm Tax Loan Fund. In terms of your hospital funds, this question came up after the investment committee a few weeks ago. We still have, as of the end of the month, 42 million, 42.5 million in funds in Wyoming class that are dedicated to the hospital. What we've been doing solely over time is transitioning funds out of Wyoming class, which is the local government investment pool, transitioning them into the more permanent type funds on the Peaks Investment Management side. Currently, Wyoming class is yielding 4.4%. As you can see in your statement, this is a monthly statement. Last month, you guys made 100, just over $162,000 for the hospital funds in Wyoming class. At that rate, you're on track to make just over 1.9 million in the hospital funds in terms of Wyoming class. That number will change over time, though, as we continue to draw down the funds in your pool and put them over to the more permanent type funds in the Peak side. I will touch on the Peak side, the investments there just briefly. This is actually a snapshot of last month as well. You see that your ending value on the first page, and there is 40.52 million. Then it breaks down and goes into the specific positions of what you own. Of the 40 million, I would like to point out that they are all AAA rated, and this is where we start to differ a little bit from what PFM is doing. We have primarily agency bonds in there, and we do have a $10 million position in a treasury bond. So they're touching into commercial papers, a lot more treasuries than we're doing and so forth. We tend to be more on the agency side, and it's this distinction that I like to point out that I think is where our portfolios actually complement one another because you're getting a much greater blend of all the fixed income type investments out there. If you go through a couple pages, through the actual positions that are being held, you'll see that our current yield in that portfolio is 4.97%. And you're tracking in this portfolio right now to do just north of $2 million in income this year. As I mentioned, all the positions in this portfolio are AAA rated, and through, it's not on this report, but it wasn't the one provided to the investment committee, our average maturities, yeah, the weighted average maturity is just under about four years there. So we are a little longer. That comes into play, though, because some of the positions are callable. As experienced this morning, we actually had a position that was a 5.375% yield. You guys were making that, the position was called. This, this morning, we replaced it with a 5.05%. So what we've been trying to do is take advantage of higher yields when they're available, similar to what Joan had mentioned. We like to keep a portion in cash so that when there's value out there or opportunity provided, we can easily take, take advantage of that and buy value bonds when we see them. So between the two portfolios, the Wyoming class and the, and the Peaks, we have roughly 90, about 99 billion, and you're tracking to do just over 4 million in income between the two portfolios right now. That is short and sweet. I thank Joan for doing the economic part, so I didn't have to do much of it, just touch on it because we know how exciting that stuff is, but I certainly would entertain any questions from you commissioners as well. And I'm happy to stick around to talk about the corporates in your investment policy as well.
Troy, on here, you said that we're transferring money out of the YO class and putting it into the Peaks. Are we getting better interest rates long-term that way? Or, you know, I see that there's 1.6 in here that's a transfer.
Yep.
I've got that highlighted too, but so where? Where's that? I mean, what is the reason behind that since we're getting good returns?
Right. Good, yeah, good, good question, Commissioner. Yeah, so we discussed with the investment committee a few, a few weeks ago, just to recap. Going through last year, we had basically what was an inverted yield curve. What that means is that the shorter-term rates are higher yielding than the longer-term rates. That changed in the fall. And so part of our strategy at the time was there wasn't an aggressive move to put money out of Wyoming class, move into the longer-term stuff because you could still maintain an attractive yield, a higher yield in the pool. Now, the yield curve has gone normal, as we refer to, where the longer-term rates are higher than the shorter-term rates. They've done that in the last few months, so we've begun to transition more. So for the time being, in the beginning, there was a real concerted effort to keep it, a lot of it in the pool, and now that things have changed, now we're transitioning the money over to faster pace than we were beforehand. So yes, the yields on your longer-term investments are higher now. It hadn't been up until just a few months ago.
Right. I know, I know they, they plummeted as far as long-term. Right. I know, I know they plummeted as far as long term investments go for a long time, for quite a while. And dropped all the way down into the threes.
Yes.
And in the short term, we're in the fives, upper fives in some cases, for a lot of those. So, yeah, that makes a big difference as far as the return on your.
Both of our pools were north of five percent last year. Yeah. Yeah.
Now, you said four percent. You figure four percent on both peak and Y O class or approximately?
Yeah, just to clarify, right now, you guys are making more than that. I think in terms of budget planning going forward and considering the fact that the Fed can continue to cut rates at least another quarter percent, I would think four percent is a good conservative number of which to incorporate into your budget planning in terms of cash flow. You're making more than four percent, but I think on the conservative side of things, that's a good number to use.
The bottom market is better to be conservative than it is to be liberal in your estimation.
And that's a number we've been sharing with everyone, I think, of four percent is a good number to target.
Okay, well, I just, I just wanted a little bit of clarification on that.
Yep, you bet. I appreciate the question. Thank you.
So. Any other questions? Okay. Well, I guess we will discuss the resolution then at the point in time.
I'm happy to sit right here while you do that.
That's, that's. Sorry, we just got this. We're just gonna have to read through it.
You haven't seen this resolution, have you?
Commissioner Laird, I did see draft copies of some of the changes that were being proposed last week. We were part of the email chain.
Anything in there alarm you?
I don't find anything alarming. No, I think, as I understand, you guys are proposing, I think, up to twenty-five percent of the portfolio, maybe corporates. As I responded to some of the emails last week, that is a common practice in other states. Joan can chime in also. We both have clients in other states we work with, so it's not uncommon to be in higher grade corporates. But it's also very common to limit the amount of your portfolio to, say, twenty, twenty-five, thirty percent exposure. And I wouldn't suggest going any more than that. But I certainly think there's opportunity there to gain extra yield while still trying to minimize risk.
Mr. Chairman, to just to key off that, that's twenty percent maximum allowance. And there's, there's a language to best if those corporates become not what we want.
After that, if you want to.
Could you say the question again?
Statement.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, I didn't know Troy looked like he had something to say about it. That's why I asked.
Oh, no, actually Tracy just provided me the draft copy here. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would just also note with, yes, with the with the maximum allocations, it's important to note, I mean, you have here in your draft policy twenty percent. And that's the maximum that it would ever be. I think it's really important to note that, you know, the portfolio managers are going to use discretion. There might be times where you're closer to that twenty percent. There might be times where you have very few corporates in your portfolio, depending on the market, depending on where spreads are. So it's not like the day you pass your policy, you'll have twenty percent of corporates in your portfolio. That would be gradual decision-making process as far as what's best for your investments. And just one other kind of late-breaking comment there on Roman eight under section B that you're that you're reviewing, as far as the maximum maturity of any corporate bond being five years. We do usually have have had five years as standard language, but at times there can be new issues that come up with maturities just a few days or weeks longer than five years. So it might be helpful to include five point five years there just so that you wouldn't miss out on a potential new issue that was just slightly, slightly over five years, just for your consideration.
Okay, and right along with that, just, just for my own clarification, we ran into a little problems with bonds in the past with state with some of that issue. So I'm a little gun shy on some of that. So I need to, I need a little reassurance. So we aren't going to get back in that same type situation where we're going to potentially lose with the interest rates changing.
Right. I think that's a fair question. Joan could chime in on this as well. I think we start out by saying, like, in terms of, like, Wyoming class, for instance, and Wyoming Government Investment Fund, both are triple A rated. So we both have teams that are very well versed in what you're permitted to do and prohibited from doing, but also that are very thorough and going through and understanding not just the credit ratings and not just the financials, but the intangibles beyond that. And so I'd like to point out that our investment team, much like hers, when the state ran into some issues a year and a half ago, those particular issues that they, that the state owned, neither of us had any positions in those companies. So I share that so that you understand that we are much deeper. It's, it's one thing to say that, yes, you're permitted to do this, but we have teams that behind this that digged even deeper than that. And so we had no exposure to any of those things in order for us to maintain the triple A rating. And what's recommended in here is keeping your highest grade bonds. Very confident that that will keep you in a safe position going forward. Also, what's happened in the past, and this happened as a result of the two thousand eight crisis. You'll recall maybe that Standard and Poor's actually downgraded US debt. So this became a question then that the debt that a lot of these local governments throughout the country owned was now not qualifiable to purchase. So the determination, kind of the standard practice then, is that as long as you're purchasing investments that may with the rating standard at the time of purchase, that that is an acceptable purchase, obviously. If the ratings change at that point, you know, obviously, you could sell it. There is a market for that as well. But keep in mind that the teams we have working behind this very, very thorough on what they do. We've never had any exposure to those things that the state treasurer did two years ago, a year and a half ago.
Well, that's kind of what I'm talking about, three years, three years, three years ago, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, and that's, yeah, it got us, we got hammered pretty hard on that. And that was something that you'd think that state investments would be a whole lot more secure and a lot better than they were. And with the change with the interest rates and everything else, it changed the whole complexion.
Yeah, I think that what what both of our, both of our companies like to pride themselves on is that we do have a triple A rating and a very robust team on both sides to make sure that what we're doing is like the the gold standard for for your investments. And no pennies, no one's ever lost a penny. So.
Well, I appreciate that.
I have, I have a question. Is there such a thing as insurance, sharing our investments?
These fall under, it's different than like the banks, for instance. The banks have FDIC insurance, obviously. And then beyond that, the banks obviously have the requirement to pledge collateralization. These fall under different statutes. So these investments are deemed acceptable. There is no insurance that is required to go beyond these investments and support them because the types of investments, minus the corporates, for instance, but the treasuries are backed by the full faith and credit of the federal government agencies. So Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, TVA, those types of things have what's called an implied guarantee from the federal government. Those are government-sponsored enterprises. They were created by Congress. So in terms of like, let's say, in two thousand eight, two thousand nine during that financial crisis, Fannie and Freddie were facing some troubles, but they went into conservatorship. So anyone that owned Fannie and Freddie bonds, not a single penny was lost because the system was designed to protect those entities. And the federal government stepped in and kept them solvent. So because these types of instruments are backed by the federal government, there is no need for insurance. When you get into the corporate space, that's a little different, obviously, because they don't have the backing of the federal government. And that's also why we would be limiting, or you would be limiting to twenty percent of your portfolio and also maintaining a high rating, not going into the junk bond space and putting everything to like, you know, AMC Theaters or GameStop or one of those things.
Is insurance available, though?
My knowledge is not, no, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Joan, have you got anything else to add to that?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would just add that, you know, the investment committee, I commend them for spending some thoughtful time and consideration on this topic. And we were able to go over a presentation at our last meeting showing a table of letter rating migration rates for investment-grade quality corporate notes. And so, you know, one of the things that's demonstrated by that is that you know, you rarely see an investment grade note that would be potentially downgraded below what would be acceptable to Wyoming State statute. It's not a guarantee. It's not insurance. It's not anything like that. But the language in Wyoming State statute and in the state treasurer's policy that outlines your ability to invest in corporate notes is very specific about the credit quality. And so that's where that kind of layer of protection comes in for you because you really don't have a choice but to stay in that very lane and be where you're invested can be most protected.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Appreciate it. We had a schedule. It's kind of nice for change. So, all right. And Troy, if you can plan on coming back same time Joan does, after.
You bet. We're happy.
Yeah, that way we just have an idea of what's going on. We're updated all the way across.
Joan and I actually speak quite frequently, so we're in touch as well. So we're happy to come up at any time.
All right, I appreciate that.
You bet.
So I know you have a long way to go.
Well, it's just getting started.
No, me and this afternoon.
Yeah, I'm headed to Lander after this.
Yeah, so, all right. Hope we don't have any other questions. I appreciate it.
Cool. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate it as well.
Thank you all very much. Have a great rest of the afternoon. We're available for questions if any come up later.
Okay.
Just give me a call.
Thank you, Joan.
Uh huh. Bye-bye.
Do we have any other discussion on this at this point, other than what to recommend, recommend a change on eight? So seven to be, well, seven to eight. The five point five years instead of five years. I don't have a problem with five point five. It feels like over five years. All right, we'll get that changed to five point five years. I don't see any other other concerns at this point in time. So get that changed and then we can move forward. We can either adopt it with the changes recommended, or we can wait until the changes have been done and then adopt it. We have the option either way.
Can we get the changes in now? Can do it in this meeting later?
No.
All right, now Tracy can hear you. Say that again.
So to to answer Dallas's question, we can make a motion to accept or adopt this at this time with the recommended changes of the five point five. That would go into play at that point. And then just update the language to what it was. We don't have to wait. It's up to y'all.
But it's a pleasure of the board.
I think my question was, is can we get the changes while we're here today? Can the county attorney have this redone and brought back to us for the regular meeting where we can approve it?
We're in a regular meeting.
Yes, we are, aren't we?
Yes, we are. So we can approve it right now with those changes.
Must do it without having to document in front of anybody that's changed.
Well, as long as that changes everybody's agreement on that same, on the same location. Adopt it now. I mean, we've already said that we were, so.
Okay, so then I'm going to just make the motion to adopt this resolution for the investment policy for Nitrone County Wyoming with the recommended changes of of oh, six point one sub nine eight to be changed from five years to five and a half years or five point five.
One B eight.
Yeah.
Six one, six point one B.
Point one B eight. Yep.
Change to five point five from five. Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
Second, Ben.
Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All votes? Okay, so move. So we will adopt with those changes. Come on up, Renee. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for coming forward this morning.
Thank you very much for seeing us today. I'm Renee Petten-Jones, and I'm a board member for Visit Casper and a Nitrone County Commissioner appointee. I wanted to come today to introduce you to our new CEO who comes to us from Washington. He has some Wyoming roots. If you want to ask about that, I'm sure she'll share. But her name is Annette Pitts, and she just joined us at the end of January. And she wants to just tell you a little bit about herself, and we'll answer any questions that you have regarding Visit Casper.
Welcome to Wyoming.
Thank you. I am so profoundly happy to be here. As Renee knows, I have spun this yarn a few times. I have been trying to get to Casper for a very long time. I do have family roots here. I grew up visiting this area fairly regularly. My grandparents and their parents homesteaded about an hour south of here. So I always just assumed this is where I would wind up, but life had other plans. And so I have been in Washington State for some time, working within the tourism industry. It's not my first rodeo. I've been doing jobs such as this, running tourism-related organizations for decades. So I do bring some experience to it. But I do recognize my learning curve here in my new destination and trying to get to know the priorities of each of the regions within the county that I'll be here to serve. So these meetings are really important to me so that you can put a face with a name. I can put a face with a name. these, uh, meetings are really important to me so that you can put a face with a name, um, I can put a face with a name. Please excuse me if I get your name wrong or if I don't know it and I'm sitting right next to you in a meeting that you are my county commissioner, this literally just happened. So thank you for your grace. So I just, I want to make sure that the lines of communication are open. I want to understand what each of your priorities are so that I can take that into consideration, take it back to my board and make sure that we're planning accord accordingly and being really good stewards of this destination. Um, I guess the other thing before I turn it over to you is just to thank you for allowing us to have Renee, um, as our appointee. I want to keep Renee, please. I really, um, I'm not just sucking up. I mean, I kind of am. But, um, Renee has been very helpful to me in understanding the, not just the lay of the land in the county, but providing that institutional knowledge so that we don't accidentally repeat something that we shouldn't, um, or so that we don't accidentally miss an opportunity. So having that continuity for our organization has been really great, um, and it's very helpful to me. So, thank you.
One thing that I did mention today that, uh, we were privileged to receive from the state, uh, tourism office was five, well, we received our portion of five million dollars uh, for destination development funds. Um, and over two year period, it was six hundred thousand dollars per year. Uh, we did talk a little bit about wayfinding signage, uh, for you all for the mountain. Um, and I do not know where that stands right now, but I, but I do know that there is a sunset on those funds. So we wanted to make sure that if we could visit with your Parks Department and find out if there's still interest and if there's, um, an opportunity for us to give you some of those funds, we'd sure love to, so.
Our Parks Director is right behind you, so that makes it really good. So.
Well, good.
I know, I know that was something that we had looked in to in the past and, um, fortunately it was something that dropped through the cracks. So I'm not sure exactly where we're at right now. I know there's, I've had discussions with Michael about this and, uh, I think that's something that we need to look into and see just exactly where we are and if we need to change anything in our designs or, or our plans. So for the signs, so, um, I know there's been a lot of changes up on the mountain. So, um.
And a few changes at the Visit Casper office, so.
Yeah, a few changes all over the place, yeah, yeah. And so we've been having a new commissioner here too, so, uh, yeah, a lot of changes around the county right now, so, um, yeah, if you, if you want to get with Michael and talk to him about it, we'll talk to him sometime and see about a presentation, bring in something back up for us on that, um, and see where we're at as far as what we need to do and as far as moving forward or what changes we need to make.
Thank you, absolutely. Is there any other question we can answer or anything else we could do for you today?
Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman. Annette, nice to meet you. Um, what type of tourism activity were you engaged in in the state of Washington?
Sure, so, um, directly before coming here, for the past three and a half years, I was the CEO of an organization called Experience Olympia and Beyond. Um, it is very similar to Visit Casper. It is a destination management or marketing organization for Thurston County. So, um, Olympia is the Casper of that DMO. Whereas we have a handful of jurisdictions within our county. Um, I had nine jurisdictions within our county and three tribal governments. So, um, I was running that organization, um, for the last three and a half years. Very similar to Visit Casper, they're also accredited through Destinations International, um, have the DMAP seal, which is pretty hard to get. See here, I also received the DI accreditation of CDME during that period, so just making sure that I had really all the latest tools in my toolbox to bring to whatever destination I was representing. Previous to my time in, um, Thurston County, I was running a regional DMO which was attached to a national scenic byway that had national parks, um, or a national park on it. Um, so it was attached to six counties, so a lot of jurisdictions and I have lost track of how many tribal governments that we were working with. So I'm very much, um, acquainted with a multi-jurisdictional approach and I would say, the other thing that's probably a little different about my approach to tourism is I look at tourism not as a vehicle to serve our visitors, and I know that sounds kind of crazy in our industry, but, um, tourism should be a vehicle to better and preserve, um, quality of life for our people who live and work in our area first, and then that should in turn benefit visitors who come here and then hopefully leave their taxes behind for us so that we don't have to pay those. So, um, it's, it's a little different than what it used to be in the industry, but I think it's really important to how we approach our work today as an organization. So stewarding those public funds that we're entrusted with and most importantly, stewarding this destination for you guys who've been here a whole lot longer than I have been.
Thank you. What, what's the deadline for the use of that funding from the state?
So the most recent, um, funding allocation, we need to fully utilize those funds by the end of twenty twenty six. However, um, there are a few steps that we need to go through to, to get the usage of those funds approved because those funds are not, um, currently approved, um, through the Wyoming Office of Tourism. I don't see it as being an issue. And I've had conversations with them as well already about updating how we plan to use those funds and um, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but I just think in order, because I've, I've been involved in these types of projects before, they tend to have long tails. And we need to make sure that we start this process as soon as possible so that we complete the project on time.
And in truth, we tried to earmark a little mistake for you all. And at the same time, the city and, um, other municipalities have encouraged us to share some funds with them, so. So there's a little bitty sense of urgency, so we'll certainly reach out to Mike right away.
And Mr. Chairman, since Mr. Brown's here, he might, maybe we make the introduction and, and maybe he has, um, an update on the wayfinding and whether that can be part of this year's budget.
Come on up, come on up, we're going to put you on the spot. We're good at that, you ought to know that by now.
So the status of the vehicular wayfinding sign, um, at a subcommittee, we reviewed, we prepared what information was to be on those signs. That it went out to bid, the lowest bid, I believe, was around sixty seven thousand dollars. That went to legal. Contractually, it was never finalized and reviewed. That may have been during a transitional time in the legal department. Um, so really the status would, to probably go out to bid again because they've been a couple of years, so those bids aren't valid. And see, see where those fall. I expect they're probably going to be higher. But I would hope they'd be less than a hundred thousand dollars total. The reason we didn't go out to bid right away after that kind of fell through was we had a road project and seventy five percent of those signs were going to be along that road. So it didn't make sense to produce the signs, put them in storage for a year and then bring them back out. Wasn't sure how warranty work would, um, warranty on the work would would work with that if, if, you know, manufacturer produces the signs, they set in storage for a year and our warranty's gone. That type of thing, so, uh, with that, the road's complete, so the projects are complete. That subcommittee did decide to not include non-public spaces as they call them. So the church camps, the Girl Scout camp, the Casper Science School, those were not included in, in, on the signs for wayfinding.
Michael, do you think we should, since those are a big part of the mountain?
I feel that they should because in the summertime, for example, the Baptist camp can have well over a thousand people visit that camp and we have, uh, one, I think there's four or five camps located on the mountain. But, um, you know, I was directed by a previous commission to have a subcommittee, the subcommittee voted on the content, so that's what I proposed and sent out to bid.
So if we did change those and added those, would it be better to add an additional sign or because I know, I know you put too much information on a sign and it gets cluttered and then you can't read what it says.
So I have drafts of the signs with that information on them.
Okay.
And then I have final design without that information. So we may have enough data to be able to produce those signs without going back to the consultant to design the signs.
Okay.
To create those. And I would have to look into that.
That's, yeah, that's good news. We have that, so.
Would it be okay if I just ask you a quick operational question?
Yes.
Does your budget include installation of those signs? Or would we need to prep additional budget for install?
The bid, the bid included installation.
It's, it's inclusive, okay.
Yeah, the original bid documents included installation of the signs.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, let's, let's see what it would cost with those, if, and see if we can do that with those on there because that, that is a big part of the mountain. Commissioner Mill?
Uh, before we make a change like that, after it's gone through subcommittee, maybe we could get somebody off that subcommittee, come in and explain what their thinking was and why they did that. Other than just change.
Yeah, there, there's some individuals that are easily available that I could get to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd agree with that, Mr. Chairman. I think that, um, you know, it might be opening up a can of worms where you, you know, the, the Baptist, some of the bigger users up there, the private users, you know, that's pretty obvious, but at what point do you stop when it comes to, you know, private usage or benefiting private usage sites? So I think, I think getting somebody in here would be a good idea.
Okay, yeah, because what, the original plan was to include the large clamps. We didn't include like, I believe there's a bed and breakfast up there and a wedding venue. Those were not included in the signs, but camps that have been there historically, the Lions Camp, the Girl Scout Camp, the Baptist Camp, Mills Spring Ranch, those were originally included. Um, and I did contact each of those to make sure that they wanted to be on the signs. So, but yeah, I can definitely get an individual from that subcommittee to come in and have a discussion with, with the commission.
And, and Mr. Chairman, it, it might be prudent, Michael, for, um, you to start working with the legal department for a, uh, a request for proposals or bids, um, you know, to bid that out, um, sometime sooner rather than later so that we have some firm numbers when it comes to budget time.
Yeah, let, let's see what we can do and get something put together so we know what we're looking at on that. So if that funding is available then, uh, we need to take advantage of it while we're here, so. Commissioner, Nicole Lason?
Unless you're still going.
No, go ahead.
I, I heard six hundred thousand dollars times two. This is sixty seven thousand dollars. What? Seems like we need to find more things to spend money on.
So it is, well, it's three hundred thousand times two, so there's six hundred thousand for the biennium.
Okay.
And so, um, given I've been here a whopping five minutes, also known as five weeks, um, I have looked at what was proposed and approved, um, previously and, and I'm recommending some changes. Um, and I've been working with Renee on that and was planning to present that to our Board of Directors. We do have a portion that is earmarked specifically for the county. Um, but I really think that our executive committee probably should be making that decision rather than just the CEO, especially a new CEO. So, I mean, I definitely think if there are other priorities at the county level, then we should, I think we should know about that sooner than later because my, and, and we can push this out further. My plan was to try and, um, get a recommendation to my executive committee by our next meeting, which is, I believe, the twenty fifth, which is next week. Um, so if we want to buy some time to have further conversation at the county level, I would definitely be open to tabling that um, so that we can make a more informed decision.
I think that'd be wise.
Yep.
I think that'd be a wise decision and, like I said, we can look at what we have and, uh, and figure out what, which direction we really need to go, but, um, you know, if the fundings are to take care of this, now's the time to do it, so.
It is, and the Wyoming Office of Tourism has already told me they're going to be flexible, uh, because I think in my first three days, I'm like, um, can I change everything that we said we wanted to do? Um, and they said yes, so we can definitely make time to make that happen.
Okay, well, I appreciate that and I appreciate you working with us on, on that to get some things done.
Thank you, glad you were here.
I worked out well, so, all right. Anything else? We're glad to have you in Casper and look forward to working with you in the future.
I am so happy to be here. Um, the only thing that can make me happier is for my house to sell in Washington and my horses. So, one thing at a time. But thank you, I really appreciate your time. I know you're very busy. Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, I think you guys are up. Happy to have you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Pleasure to be here again. Um, as you know, we have completed the twenty twenty four, uh, financial statements and compliance audit for the county. And, um, a few things that we would like to discuss, um, there were not, we've implemented one standard, but that was just a sort of a present. Present, the standard was just a presentation changes, so it didn't really have a necessarily effect. We will discuss later, there's about four more standards coming up, so this year was sort of a little bit of a reprieve, but um, I think that the main thing that we would like to discuss, some of the findings that we've had this year and, uh, answer any questions, uh, discuss the management comment letter, uh, and things like that. So I'm going to turn over to Seth Corson. In, just, he was a lot more intimately involved with the findings, so both of us can answer all the questions.
Okay, so I'm Seth Corson, so I'm the audit manager on the side for the county audit here. I'm obviously Alexander, the shareholder, and then we've got Brian, he's our, um, main staff assigned to it as well. So before we jump into, uh, the current year financials and the findings, um, that Alexander was mentioning, I kind of just wanted to do a brief overview of the audit process and what that looks like. Um, so when we start, we start compiling information that we gather from the different departments of the county. Obviously the clerk, like Tracy's office or Tom's office, the treasurer. Big thing with the county specifically is all the component units that come together into this group financial as it's presented. So our audit process begins with gathering all that information from them, their reports and their, um, accounting records and software access, so we can pull those reports. And then from there, we kind of dive into what we would call our audit procedures and start, um, either reviewing like underlying supporting information or forming different analytics and things like that as we work through our process. An additional, go ahead.
One of the things that I probably will add is that what started is that, uh, the county maintains their financial reports on a cash basis. The audit, the financial statements are on GAAP basis. So, and there is also a full accrual and modified accrual. So, um, when we receive all the reports and all the information to start the audit, then we also receive, uh, schedules or actual journal entries from Nick Martinez or other departments that need to be recorded, uh, for the full GAAP presentation. We audit those schedules and that's, you know, otherwise, you know, um, someone else would have to prepare that, so we actually get a trial balance that's full GAAP. So that is quite a bit of a process and, uh, and specifically that the county has a lot of departments involved. It, it ends up being a little convoluted sometimes.
Yeah, and that's a big component of that information that we're gathering, right? So the underlying records are essentially in the accounting software of the county are maintained on that budgetary basis. For you guys to do some of that month to month or, uh, more regular review of like budget to actual and budget type reports, whereas when it's presented in the financials, it gets to that full accrual presentation, which includes different components, things like a pension, right, or fixed assets and stuff like that. So a big component of that audit process is gathering that information and then testing that information as it's put together. So, and it's good to understand that that, um, is a component of the audit because it, it kind of lends to, if we have information or findings that we have, um, how that works, so. a component of the audit cuz it, it kinda lends to, if we have information or findings that we have, um, how that works, so. Um, then from there, another component of the county that's a major piece is obviously the auditing of the grants, right? So that's called that single audit component, and that's that separate audit of the financial statement. So then from there, we're pulling out, okay, here's a list of the federal awards received by the county. And then there's a selection process to choose which one of those are considered major, and then components have to be tested for those major, um, grants. So, so with that, that's kind of a brief, really quick overview of the audit process and what it looks like. And then diving into the current year financials, um, before we get into the numbers, I'll start with the page one, which is that, um, our opinion on the financials. And you'll see there in that first paragraph on page one, it's gonna state blatantly there that there's an unmodified opinion. And what that's going on is that we were able to obtain sufficient audit evidence, um, to, to issue an opinion that, um, this is our thoughts or recommendations or findings related to that information. If there was never an instance where we weren't able to compile enough information to even issue an opinion, you would see a modified, like an adverse or a disclaimer of opinion, whereas we couldn't get enough information to issue that. So that's that. And then, um, you know, from there, you'll go into your discussion and analysis, kind of a layman's overview of the financial statements themselves, and there's a future looking component there. Um, and then from there, you jump right into the hard and fast numbers of the county, so.
So one of the things that, uh, the county's financial statements essentially can say, include statements that show three different bases of accounting. So on page sixteen and then subsequently, statement of net position and statement of activities, those two are on full accrual. So the difference between the statements on those two pages uh, and the page sixteen nineteen through twenty four, uh, sorry, uh, through twenty five, one, is basically full accrual. Uh, you're accruing all the liabilities of the county, all of the capital assets are recorded. You know, like, for example, the big, uh, liability for the county is pension, uh, all the capital assets, any kind of receivables. Receivables are going to show up on both, but, uh, nine, page nineteen and twenty where there's a balance sheet for governmental funds, uh, that's focuses on the current resources. So there will not be liabilities only that are due. You know, I mean, retainage is going to show because that is a liability, but a long-term debt will not be there, for example. And of course, going further, there are reconciliations, uh, there are statements, uh, for these strictly presenting component units, and also fiduciary statements. Um, after the footnotes, that's what I said, is a third kind of a, it's not really a full statement, but that's kind of a thing with the commissioners, I used to looking at what, um, is, is the budgetary statements. And that's going to be basically cash basis, cash revenues and cash expenditures. So that's kind of on a gradual basis what, uh, everyone is looking at the county's financial statements and then just looking at all the accruals.
Perfect. So that's kind of a brief overview of those different bases that she's mentioning. Obviously, those first two, like the statement of net position and statement of activities is that, that full accrual, so you're gonna have all your assets, all your liabilities that are expected to be paid, right, through the future or have a useful life through the future. And then you'll jump into that modified accrual, which the purpose of that is to really focus on that current available resources, right? Inflow that you might have available. Um, so like a metric for that is sixty days after year end that you might receive. So you can consider or start planning how you're gonna spend that money if you were to receive it, right? And then really, your budgetary is that hard cash. What do I have today? What did I spend today? So. And then your notes are really gonna break down in detail, um, those components, um, and what they're made up of. Each one of those numbers are made up of and why, how they're recorded and that, that sort of information. So the big one we like to highlight, obviously just cuz of the, um, volume and size of this, um, short of reading it, you know, word for word, is jumping to that page seventy-two, note fourteen. Um, accounting standards issued but not implemented. So more forward looking, what's coming down the pipe? What could change the financial statements in the future in terms of how things need to be recorded and why, right? Cuz if we're recording something, we're saying, what's the purpose of tracking it and why are we keeping an eye on it, um, and how we're gonna use that? So the big one that seems to be coming, um, would be like the compensated absences next year. There's new accounting standards out on how they want to look at that. So if you had employees, you know, with accrued comp time, whether that's sick time, comp time, um, vacation time, what does that liability look like and how's it getting used through the year? And then how's it getting accrued through the year? So you can kinda track that from a management perspective. So we'll delve into that again next year. This is forward looking. And then from there, you're looking at some improvements to like disclosure items and reporting models just to enhance if someone was to read these financial statements, their understanding of it and their usefulness of it, if that makes sense, so. Um, yeah, so from there, we can jump now, um, to our page one twenty-three, which is kind of a nice little report card, I believe, as Alexandra likes to refer to it, as a summary of our auditor's results, right? So it's kinda what I, the top piece there is what I had mentioned when we started with the, um, auditor's report. It's an unmodified opinion, which is good. That's what we're after. We wanna say, if someone was to audit us, we're able to gather enough evidence that they can adequately audit us, cuz if there's not enough information there to even know what we're issuing an opinion on, it wouldn't be unmodified. So that's that. And then from there, we can have what we would call reportable findings. So material weakness or significant deficiency. So as we work through the audit process, there's the term that we call materiality, and that is, um, a dollar threshold we set based on the information that we're looking at. And if there's a correction or an error that has to happen based on, that's only over that dollar value, that's what would have fallen to that material weakness. Um, so then the second reportable finding that could come under that material weakness is gonna be what we call a significant deficiency. So it may not be have a significant dollar amount based on that threshold that we've determined, um, but we may consider it something that merits what we call the attention of governance or management, such as you guys, that we say, hey, we need to bring this to light so someone is looking at this and understanding that. So, um, then again, that's broken into two components. So there's really two audits that are happening here. There's a financial statement audit and a federal awards audit. So when we get into the federal awards component, rather than looking at just the dollar values that are recorded, we're looking at the compliance component, right, of that grant award and its compliance requirements. So you again can have material weaknesses, which again follows the same similar criteria and significant deficiencies. So you'll see here that in that report card, there is material weaknesses, and I'll jump into those as we get to the findings after this for the financial statements. And then there was both a material weakness and significant deficiency for findings that we had reported in the current year for the compliance component. And I'll briefly go over those as I jump here to those findings, so.
Uh, one aspect also of material weakness is the, the dollar threshold, but also can an error be, uh, identified by management or people who are involved with it? Uh, you know, and catch something that may be small now, but it could be better later.
Right, perfect. Yeah, so that's a good thing to bring up. So when we say material weakness or significant deficiency, that, and again, we had an unmodified opinion. So we were able to determine what the correction should be and get that correctly recorded, so we have the correct amount. But we have to think of it in the light of deficiencies, like why was it wrong to begin with? And what's the process that can be updated or reviewed, um, to make sure that that's caught and detected and prevented in the future? If that makes sense? So, um, I'll, again, I'll just kinda briefly go over each one of these, and you guys could, um, go through the breakdown here in the financials. But starting on that one twenty-four page is each one of those items we noted. So the first one, twenty twenty-four zero zero one, one of those material weaknesses. So we had, um, an error in the distributions to other taxing authorities. So as you guys are aware, the county is responsible for collecting the levies, um, for the various taxing authorities within the county and then distributing those. So in this instance, that collection had happened, that distribution had happened, but there is an error in terms of an over-distribution. Um, and this relates primarily to those ad valorem taxes that have began to become collected monthly. There's been challenges throughout the state, throughout the counties with these, um, in terms of recording, reconciling and tracking. So ad valorem taxes were collected on behalf of an entity and then over-distributed, over-distributed, distributed twice essentially, um, for one month. And so then essentially now this entity has received more property taxes than has been collected on their behalf. We see this, um, semi-regularly, and then what happens is future distributions are essentially reduced to catch up to that amount. So that's that first one. Um, the second one relates to property taxes receivable. And again, um, the cause, um, or issue related to that stems around these ad valorem taxes that seem to be creating challenges, um, for recording was receive, uh, those ad valorem taxes are collected in advance. You guys are aware that those are monthly collected, but they aren't even levied until the year after that they've been collected. So as you're collecting, in this instance, like, let's say this month, February twenty-five, those aren't even gonna be levied until August, right? When you guys set the levy in twenty twenty-six. So essentially, these have to be tracked as received in advanced amounts. And then when that levy is set, then, um, they're applied against essentially that bill, right? So in this instance, that first year that that implementation took place in twenty twenty-two, when that came through the state's processes, was there was receivables for amounts billed that had already been paid and the levy just had not been applied against it. So essentially, as we generate these receivable reports to say, hey, who owes us in terms of taxpayers? Um, these had already been paid, but they were still showing on that list. So essentially, there was a, um, a deficiency there, so. The next matter, um, relates to material non-compliance. So again, under the government auditing standards, um, we are still reviewing, we're not searching for non-compliance, but if we become aware of it and our audit procedures, we would note that, again, if that's material or significant. Um, and so here, there's that material non-compliance for required distributions to other taxing authorities. So similar to those collections that are happening on behalf of others, there's statutes that require timeliness or timeframes that when those amounts are supposed to be turned around and distributed, right? So if there's like a significant amount collected on behalf of a school district, they're supposed to receive those, I believe, my understanding is monthly. Eleventh of the following month, right? So that they're collecting their funds that they're using for their operations timely as it's coming to the county. So in our review of that, there was, there's many forms of different types of collections, right? Property taxes, ad valorem, um, taxes, motor vehicle, um, apportioned fees. And through the items that we tested, the, um, primarily ad valorem and then those apportioned fees had not been distributed under that required timeframe during twenty twenty-four's fiscal year that we had tested. So I think the major component of that or cause, again, relates back to some of that ad valorem. As that money is received, um, it has to be reconciled to what's to be billed to then be distributed before, um, the treasurer's office was comfortable recording that distribution. And so that's kind of the background of where that, um, deficiency came from, so. Any questions on those? That'll be the, what's noted in the financial statement findings before I jump really to like the federal awards and that single audit grant test. So, does anyone have any questions related to those or? Okay. So then, again, like I said, there's really two audits that happen during this process. There's the financial statement audit and the single audit, which we refer to for the audit of those federal awards. Um, and so in there, we're now testing items and controls as it relates to compliance, right? So a grant and award has requirements with it written with inside that that should be followed, um, for that grantee to receive that grant award, right? So in that federal award and that single audit process, like I had mentioned earlier, we select, um, major programs is what we refer to them as. So from the list of all the granting awards that are received within the county, we, um, pick risky ones, high-dollar ones, and we test those and highlight and focus on those. So those two that were tested in the current year, um, are grants that are received from the, um, community action partnership. Community action partnership as a component unit of, um, the county fall under that grant. The testing falls under that purview. So the two grants we tested, there was the community service block grant and then the healthcare for the homeless. So, um, background, I guess, or cause on that one was, uh, CAP has been working pretty diligently, I'd say, in terms of a software conversion for their accounting software. Brian could probably weigh in, but I can't recall off the top of my head the name of their old software. They've now converted to a Sage, which is similar to what the county uses down in the clerk's office, and, um, then an ADP for their payroll, um, tracking and reporting. And so there was challenges related just to that conversion and issues noted in that, that when we want to test a federal award, essentially we have to compile a list. Okay, here's the expenditures you spent on that federal award, and then we have to be able to test that. So with that accounting conversion, just the classification that took place saying, here's someone that was paid payroll and X number of hours was for this grant, X number of hours for this grant. There were some reconciliation differences that we, um, encountered with that, and that's where you can see down there in that question cost. That's what those differences are. And so essentially, we're, we, not as the granting agency, couldn't determine if those are or not allowable costs. But we could highlight them in audit report that said, hey, based on the detail that we were provided to test this, this is some of that reconciliation issues that we had. So, does that make sense? So that's the first one.
I know it got quiet. No. Hold, hold on a minute. Yeah. Well, it won't pick up on the recording, so that's, so, uh, yeah, try it again.
Am I on now? There we go. Perfect. Okay, cool. So then the last one is the cash management component. So this is directly related to just the healthcare for the homeless, um, grant. So I had mentioned earlier, when we select a grant to test, um, they have what they call the uniform guidance that comes out from the Office of Management and Bureau. And they, um, essentially have a matrix that says, these are the compliance requirements, is what they refer to them as, that you have to test, right? You have to test the allowed activities of the grant, the reporting requirements of the grant, the cash management component of the grant. So in this instance, um, there was a reimbursement request submitted for the grant that there's a timeframe for the healthcare for the homeless grant that is near year, month end. They get reimbursed monthly, and then there's a couple days for the activity that occurs at the end of the month that then gets reimbursed in the following month, um, as it's filed on the report. Um, and so in this instance, there was, um, it had got, it had gotten submitted for reimbursement twice for one of the months. And so essentially, they've over-reimbursed from their eligible expenditures. And in that context paragraph there, you can see it was about, uh, three thousand dollars. So again, it's only the last few days of the month for the activity, so it doesn't generally, um, come up to a significant dollar amount. But it is a cash, uh, cash management component that you should only be submitting for reimbursement for the amount you've actually incurred. So that came to our attention and that was, you know, brought to the attention of CAP. And then we obtained from them, you know, the views of the, the views they have on that and what their plan of correction is on that. So again, some of the causality of that relates to, as an accounting software is converted, being able to generate the report that you're using to submit for that reimbursement and ensuring that that's accurate. So that also being, um, what I had mentioned earlier, there's a difference between a material weakness and significant deficiency. That one's kind of on that lower end of the spectrum, so that's significant deficiency, so. And again, um, as Alexander just pointed to, there's, uh, an, we're looking at this in terms of the internal control component. So again, we were able to identify what was wrong and see the correction that needed to be made. So we're more concerned about what's your internal control process to prevent this from being wrong in the future and going forward. So, makes sense? Any questions on that one or any of those specifically? Outside of that, that's the major components I think we have to note, like I said, in our audit this year. Um, and again, that's a brief overview of everything that we did. So the county obviously being a fairly, um, a fairly large and significant audit and comes, um, multiple departments, multiple, um, component units and boards, so.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ramel.
So looking at this, um, some of the, going back to, to not CAP or almost, but to the county. Um, and next here, I see, looks like, it looked like they, uh, they are correcting their, their stuff implementing a new software system that hopefully will correct these findings. It looked like per their, oh, their, uh, whatever, their view.
Is this in the property taxes? One of the comments that was here, yeah, I think that, um.
Yeah, so back to that views of that responsible officials. So, um, as we find, um, issues, you know, we submit to them, hey, these are the issues and what's your planned corrective action plan? So yeah, you're correct. So in conversations with Tom's office and Heather down there and, and Nick as well, um, they're reviewing that property tax software as it's written. And I believe the IT department is also assisting with that to say, okay, the major hiccup comes right from that ad valorem change, and it's, it's different than maybe how things have been recorded historically and the required reports are the information that's needed. And so they're reviewing that and its capabilities and how it's written so that, that reports as they are generated are accurate and prevent these going forward, yeah.
This, it is a little more complicated nowadays because if, um, you really think about this, uh, at the end of every fiscal year, and each entity has about eighteen months of prepaid ad valorem taxes. So now when the, now August is going to come along, that this, August twenty-five, a levy of twenty-five is going to be, um, set, uh, then, but the ad valorem are based on twenty-four production. So everything that was pre-collected for that, and part of that would be collected in this past, this past fiscal year, and everything else will be collected in the following, the twenty- And everything else will be collected in the following, the twenty five fiscal year. That was, so then the levy is going to whatever is going to be, that will have to be applied. Then you have left over what needs to be, what's going to have to be collected. And in some instances, there will have to be corrections made. There was a correction that happened a few years ago because uh, all the money now, the payments are made at the state. There could be an error in a district that was reported, then they will make a correction after that. Then you potentially have to change things. So it is a quite complicated process, uh, you know, that uh, the system now, everybody's trying to work through this. There's a lot of counties that are struggling with somewhat how to implement it, you know, because you have. Multiple collections in a prior years that have never occurred before. And then also what ends up being quite complicated when an entity changes a levy. It would never necessarily be an issue for the county because the county generally levies the twelve mills that are allowed, right? And then that includes the component units, but there are districts that sometimes change a levy. So you will have a say senior, senior district, right? Senior district is going to change a levy, they used to levy two mills, now they suddenly levy a one mill. So, but ad valorem taxes are paid, you know, and the joint production year. And that year is whatever that mill levy is in place. So now suddenly, sorry, I actually will sit for a while, and this is my first day back, so I'm kind of like. As I said, I, I don't really, didn't want to talk too much because, so um. So what happens then, that particular tax, the taxpayers, that everything that was uh allocated to that district, they all overpaid. So now in September, right after the levy is set, all that there's going to be something that's called the true up. So if a district changing levy, you don't necessarily have to refund or you have to pay back. So it is quite a complicated process to kind of go through that. So I think they are working through the new software. Uh, and I think there's some of the issues related, just that in predomin, you know, prevailing comment in this here was internal control. To make sure that you're looking at all the reports, tying everything and everything goes forward, especially that it's just a lot of potential error to, to happen.
Thank you. Any other questions? It's quiet. That's good.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we had two management comment letters too. I mean, two management comments and a management comment letter. Uh, two comments, one of them related with sort of a repeat that we had last year, because we had the same issue this year. Now, so um.
Do you want me to hit on those so I can save?
Yeah, why don't you talk about it?
Okay, so, so again, in those management comment letters. So I'd mentioned earlier that we have different levels of deficiencies that we would note, that material weakness and that significant deficiency. If it falls outside of that purview, it'll land in what we call this management comment letter, which is really just advice and suggestions. Not really reportable finding in the audit report, but something to note going forward, so. Um, the two items in that comment letter that you guys should have available to is um the capital assets. And um the recording of those. So as Alexandra mentioned earlier, when we do this audit process, those books are on that budgetary basis. And essentially, you have to compile auxiliary schedules, right? For that information that's going to get to that um full accrual for the presentation for the report to the state. So with that fixed assets, right, isn't really encompassed in that budgetary process. You may have the capital outlay, but the tracking of that cost going forward and the depreciation on it isn't always encompassed in that um component. So what happens there is your fixed assets are tracked separately. Um, and Nick's department um compiles that based on information from the different departments um throughout the county and essentially um. Caught through like the voucher process, hey, that was a large purchase and that's something that's capitalizable. We need to track on this schedule. And the challenge associated with that is identifying everything that should be added to that schedule and everything that shouldn't. Unfortunately, it's not as simple as a dollar threshold because it could be significant, but still be a repair, right? Versus just a capitalizable item, so um. What happened there was that road um added on Circle Drive back there is really kind of an overhaul, rehab, complete rehabilitation of that road. Whereas not just a repair, and so trying to capture all those expenses to make sure that those are included as a capital asset, so. That's the background on that one. So second item on that, it relates to the assessor's um certification from the state and the assessed values. Um, that they have and then what got certified from the state, so um. The assessing process, right, starts with that. These are the assessed properties as of January first and their assessed values. And the assessor works through, um, you know, getting what those assessed values are on that, those properties. And then it goes through a state certification process about May and June, I believe. And the state pulls that file and looks at that and says, okay, this is what um you've got listed for your, you know, X number of residential properties, commercial properties. And this is their assessed values. And they do their certification process and they actual, actually issue a certification letter. So based on working through um this with the assessor here and other assessors um in counties throughout the state. Um, there's still uh updates and changes that happened to a handful of properties and assessed values from that point forward. And what we like to see is like, if that's certified by the state and then those changes are updated or may, or changed. We like to see that that reconcile um to a T essentially. And we've seen it quite commonly through some of the counties in the state that sometimes those aren't um hundred percent tracked. Based on the time that it's provided to the state and certified and then the time that it's then rolled essentially to the treasurer. And so again, not a significant dollar threshold once we got down to that finding, but a recommendation going forward. Um, really specifically to the assessor that if there is a certification that happened from the state and any changes to properties after that. Um, to track that in terms of your processes. So if someone wants to come in and say, okay, this is what the state certified. This is what ended up being the ultimate assessment of that property that is then rolled to a tax bill. You would be able to see any changes noted from there, so.
Basically, we want to make sure that the, the timeframe between the certification and the actual levy. Whatever changes were made, and there are always some changes, uh, that that is definitely supported and there is a schedule. And someone can, when they want to know, why did this change, why, why was this change made? I mean, some of those changes come down from the state. Uh, they call this a notice of, an OVC's notice of valuation change. Uh, and it could be different, so then they just, that, that report is actually generated and created and you can actually look at that. So then if we wanted to test if somebody else wants to look at that, that, that there is, you know, a support for that particular. Any change that was made between those two, 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 kind of two dates, the two reports, sort of.
Any questions on those specifically or?
Commissioner Blair.
I just have a general question. Sometimes it seems that our, our procedures are inadequate from a standpoint of software. Don't think we're using any AI, I don't know whether you're, you're using that in your office yet, but I think that uh. We're gonna be way behind if we don't start thinking about that. But what I'm, what I'm hearing from you is, is that perhaps some of our procedures are inadequate. And we need to get them changed. And I don't see much of that in your report.
You're referring that we're saying the procedures are, are inadequate and need to get them changed or, I'm sorry, could you say?
Saying, are we up to date on uh what's available out there so that we can be more accurate? And it'll take less time, less cost and what have you.
Yeah.
Because a lot of things in the county, like me, are kind of old, and so I want to keep them.
Up to date, yeah, for sure.
So, so um.
The challenge, I think, with that um. Specifically, so software, uh, software world's changing every day, right? If that's what we're talking about and process, things are changing every day. Um, as an example, that um property tax, that valorous process, right? How that's even legally set and assessed and collected through the um state and then dispersed to the county. And um, any situation like that, whether it's a software conversion, a law change in terms of how things are collected and recorded. Um, does warrant special attention at the time of that change, a new accounting um sock, uh, standard, right? To make sure that as that change takes place, that it's takes place accurately and that the process going forward captures that um. Going forward accurately, so.
Well, I think our comments kind of say that is that we recommend that the county, you know, the individuals involved in those particular. Issues that we have brought up, review the process, you know, and how the process works. Is there, is this correct or something needs to be revised? You know, um, you, some of this, uh, you know, you can use AI in some things, you know, I'm not sure in this, this instance in particular. But you can use, you know, you have data that's coming from software. You need to check and verify the data is correct. So that's, you know, is the procedure or process working correctly? And I think that's kind of what we were saying. So we were not saying, no, it's not, you know, in a way, we are saying some things are not working correctly because if the error. Would not have happened if it was working correctly, so that's kind of what we have reported, yes.
And I do think from an internal control standpoint, right, that's our monitoring component. So in, in the auditing world, we've got different facets of internal control and how that works. You got your control activities, you've got your um information that warrants the control. And then one of those components is a monitoring activity. So that's just a continuous process, right? We're looking at that every day, month and year to say, as we go forward. Um, what should be changed, what should be updated um to make sure that we're adequately um exercising control over our processes? So we're detecting items that when they go wrong, things like that, so, does that make sense?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Perfect, thank you guys, thank you guys for having us. And a big thanks to everybody involved with the audit in terms of the county's departments and things like that.
Thank you for all the work that you guys do, that, that's really important.
Yeah.
It's good, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it, it's time um to take a motion to uh recess into executive session for sixteen dash four, four oh five.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Say, say, okay, so we're in executive session.
Yeah.
Jim, you want to start out on?
Yeah, so, uh, Parks Board of Trustees meeting last one, I brought up that, uh, with the trustee board, at that point, we would have two parks boards running concurrently, which is kind of confusing for the public, I believe. Uh, one, the advisory board operates under the authority of the BOCC as far as direct reporting and them being an advisory board with the BOCC with being the executive or the decision making and money spending board. My recommendation was to go ahead and as, uh, now as the board of county commissioners to, um, thank the board of advisor, you know, the advisory board for their, uh, work for the last twenty years. But to go ahead and remove that board, disband that board. And if the Parks Board of Trustees decides they need an advisory board, they can constitute that board at that point because then the advisory board would be, bring in their advice, their suggestions to the trustee board. It's all laid out in, in the board or the bylaws. If they're, if they're accepted as presented, um, by that board. The, uh, I, I watched your meeting the day and, uh, there were some good points and, and it does seem like there's been some, failure to communicate between what, what, between the advisory board and this board uh, in the recent, uh, history here of the two boards. Where my thought is as, I'm trying to figure out which hat I need to put on. That the, with the advisory board being disbanded, that at that point, the board of trustees is supposed to be a citizen board anyways. That's what it develops into is grassroots citizen board, just like what the advisory board is. Except for you then have the executive power to do, complete those projects. With those positions being five years, you don't have a deciding board like the board of county commissioners. Every two years, you get more new members, the division, the direction may change. Where the board of, of Parks is a five-year membership. That, that, uh, direction, that vision can stay consistent. And some of these projects that are being, uh, left by the wayside, not, not intentionally or anything, but, but just a different priority, um, becomes, is standardized. It's, it's, there's the follow through, um, rather than just kind of the whatever. Uh, so it'd be my recommendation as a BOCC that we disband the advisory Parks Board at this point. With our, like I said, our thanks, complete thanks. I know you guys did a lot of work, a lot of good work. But I think that the board of trustees, being the executive body, needs to determine their own advisory board if they need one. Or I'd recommend with the dissolution of the advisory board, you guys need to put in for the trustee board.
Commissioner Nicolason?
I would make a motion to dissolve the advisory board.
We don't, we don't, we don't have that on the agenda. So I'm not, I'm not going to accept that right now. That's out of order. This is for discussion, so, um, we're just, we're just, we're just discussing this at this point in time. So, um, I'm not going to accept that motion.
All right, we didn't have the investment policy on the agenda either. In any event, I, I would then, uh, ask our legal counsel if it's appropriate for us to make such a motion. We, we did kind of discuss this at our previous meeting two weeks ago. Counsel, what's your opinion on whether or not we could make a motion to dissolve it? Because I think one of the issues that Mr. Brown had mentioned last time is kind of this awkward situation where he had already had, or we had already publicly noticed the Parks Board advisory meeting. And so we're kind of continuing this, um, this process. So do we have the authority?
Mr. Nicolason, Commissioner Nicolason, I still think that you were out of order.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have the floor and I'm asking our legal counsel her opinion.
And I've already expressed that you were out of order in that motion, so, um, and you continued. So at this point in time, uh, I do believe that you're out of order in this and we need to continue with the discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have the right to ask our attorney her legal opinion. And if, if the ruling of the chair is that a commissioner, an elected commissioner, doesn't have the right to ask legal counsel an opinion, I think you're way out of line. And if that's your decision, I would appeal the chair's decision.
Mr. Chairman. I think that you have, you're entitled to continue.
As a point of order, whether there's a second is the next before.
Yeah, but I want to, I want to make a point of order that I noticed here that Mr. Millen spoke about the advisory Parks Board. And then the next one is Dave North speaking about staple three sheet proposal. Then with respect to your request to the county attorney, I agree with that, but I think that should be in an executive session because you're seeking legal advice. And, uh, so I would request if we do do that, we go into executive session concerning your request.
Is that a motion?
I don't know what Mr. North has, has at four fifteen, but we're following the agenda, as I understand it. So I don't know what this staple three sheet disposal really is. If it has anything to do with the advisory Parks Board.
The, the reason for having this on here was to discuss the future of this, what we're going to do and where we were going to go. And that's, that's what we wanted to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Millen?
I think that with, uh, again, as I previously stated, that with the two boards, whether it's, and this was even brought up at the advisory board meeting, was, uh, what board did the public come to to make their comments? Is it theirs? Is it the trustees? They had questions, I think, kicking the can down the road and not either, either somehow have an advisory board that's under the BOCC rather than the, the trustee. I don't see where their authority to do or be effective or basically do anything is at that point. My, my letter to the, to this board requesting this topic was a discussion and a decision. And so I, I, I think they, as the advisory board, deserve to not be in limbo, but to actually have a decision by this board as to what their future holds.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm still confused. Because what I'm seeing here is there's a discussion and then there's another discussion with Heather Duncan Malone, legal update and agenda review resolution declaring the dissolution of the NC Parks Advisory Board. I'm assuming, Mr. Nicolason, that's what you're talking about. So it would seem to me that all of this would come in when we hit that part of the agenda. But I think at this point, with respect to this, and I don't, I'm not sure it's a legal update so much as getting legal advice. And I think that needs to be done in executive session.
Commissioner Laird, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Nicolason.
We ask our legal attorney for advice all the time. And, and we don't go into executive session, um, the vast majority of the time in the two and a half, two and almost three years I've been on this board. If, if appropriate, um, then we could certainly do that. But whether or not a commissioner has the procedural power, um, or even to consult, you're trying to keep us from consulting our attorney during a, a board meeting. So I, I think these things need to be discussed in public. That's why I appealed the decision of the chair. I, I think that we can continue to have discussion if, um, if appropriate. But, but I think my, my motion, uh, appealing the chair's decision is pending.
Well, I would just admit, I want to answer that. I, I want to know what the condition is concerning legal advice being required to take in an executive session. It's one of the elements, isn't it?
So, Mr. Chairman, I believe what the question is, is whether the board has the ability to, uh, I guess, adopt, approve a motion to dissolve the board today. The advisory Parks Board today, I believe the question that Chair, or Commissioner Nicolason asked.
Before we go any further on this, so I do have more discussion on this.
Why, why won't you let our attorney, uh, answer that question?
And again, I'd, I'd say that, you know, that this issue coming up highlights the necessity for adopting rules. Um, I think to Commissioner Nicolason's point, we, we did just approve the amended, uh, investment policy uh, earlier in the afternoon during the appointment portion, which was a discussion portion.
Miss County Attorney, we didn't call on you yet. You didn't even ask to be recognized. And I want to know if you're prepared legally to answer this question and you can show me a statute or a case that, that reflects on this. What I asked you was, is this something that should be done in executive session? And isn't one of the, one of the issues for executive session, legal advice?
So.
Isn't it?
You, you called on me, so I do have the floor, so I'm, I'm going to speak to that. And I am read, prepared to give you a recommendation right now.
Is this an executive session matter?
No.
And then why do you say that? Would you read me what's required in an executive session?
It's for legal advice. It can be for matters considered confidential under law, which can include legal advice.
Okay.
Well, I think if you read that, you've, you've added to that.
Commissioner Laird, let me add some things. Commissioner Coats, go ahead.
Once again, we're devolving into this point of absurdity. I think that there is some decorum that we should follow. I think that we should respect our fellow commissioners. I think we should entertain motions regardless of how they may turn out. I think by not doing that, we fall towards tyranny of a major, of a majority or a minority. So that's all I have to say on that. But we need to have some respect for one another and our opinions and our desires to better the county.
I would like a little bit more discussion before we move into any motion. And that's, that's what I wanted to talk about. That's what I was going to say. And, uh, I do, I do believe that there are a lot of questions right now that have not been answered about this board. I personally have contacted the Secretary of State, uh, to find out. I've found out today that I'm not sure if there was ever a dissolution filed with the Secretary of State to start with on the first board. That was created nineteen fifty-seven. I did talk to our county attorney about this this morning. And there are, there's, there's questions out there that need to be answered before we move forward with any, any motion or anything else. And that's, that's the reason why I wanted discussion on this, is so that we had everything out there. Right now, we found out that for whatever reason, in nineteen ninety-five, when they recreated this, the board, even though that was stamped, authorized by the county clerk at the time, that we can't find any evidence of that either. So, and unfortunately, there's been a lot of cases of paperwork slipping through the cracks in this county over the years, for whatever reason. And there's a lot of things that haven't been answered. Until those questions are answered, I don't believe that we can take, take action on something when we don't have the answers to it. So that is, that, that's, that's what my thoughts are on this and that's, that's where we need to go.
Mr. Chairman.
You don't have the floor. You don't, you don't have the floor, I'm not done. So I believe that that's something that we need to find out those answers to. I, this isn't something that is pressing on us, that we have to do right this minute. And, yeah, there is a little confusion out there right now. But at the same time, there has been a lot of confusion over the past as far as why and what. Because there hasn't always been information shared all the way across the board. And because of that, I don't think this is the appropriate time, in my personal feeling, for us to make that call. So I will call on you when I'm finished. So that, that's where, that's where we're at on this. I think there's a lot of questions that we need solid answers to that are definitive answers before we, that we move forward on some of this stuff. And then at that point, that's where we can take that stand. But I'm, I'm not willing to make a decision personally on when I don't have all the information. So, Commissioner Nicolason?
Thank you. Okay, so here's how it works. The way it works is that someone makes a motion. And if it's seconded, then there's discussion. And points like the ones you were just making would be entirely appropriate. And then the body would get to vote on it and we'd be done. If there's not a second, then we're done talking about it. But what happens is if you, as a dictator, say, we're not going to do something, then that doesn't serve the public well and it's not right as a, we're all equal here in terms of being elected officials. So the process is really simple. Motion, second, discussion, vote. And all your points and all of our points, and I have a ton of respect for the work done by the advisory board. And like Commissioner Millen, I was going to suggest that they apply for all of these positions. But, but that's the discussion component of it. So as a procedural matter, matter, this is all out of order, but it doesn't have to be difficult.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laird.
I do think that we have to address dissolving a board at some point. Now, I'm not running the meetings and we don't have Robert's Rule of Order, but according to the statute, the chairman runs the meetings. And the chairman make, can make the decisions of whether something's hurt or not. Now, when I read this agenda, I have to admit, I thought we were going to talk about whether the, this NC Parks Advisory Board should be dissolved. Because we are, we have issues with what we've been doing with this new Parks Board. We have issues with the advisory parks board. And I for one, I just want to get it cleared up. I don't want to argue with anybody about anything. But um, I think that the only thing I can say at this point is, is that under the statute, the chairman runs the show. Until we can adopt some rules, which I'm also in favor of adopting rules, but it was never done since I've been on the board and I've asked for it a couple of times, but no one ever proposed it, including you, Mr. Nicolason, I still think. And now I don't want to have meetings where I come here and, and there's a sparring match with a member and the chairman. Because when you ran the board, Mr. Nicolason, you, you gavelled a couple of times and cut meetings short. And then your county attorney said, well, he can do that. So I never liked that either, but what I'd really like to do now is solve this problem we have with these boards and these gentlemen who faithfully served on that board. And I hope they do apply for this other board. But we still have issues with the, with getting all of the material done for the new board to, for it to even take place. I don't think it's been adopted yet. There's no bylaws to it that I know of. And maybe I'm wrong there. But uh, and I would appreciate it if the county attorney would review the statute concerning the duties of the chairman and who runs the meeting. And it's not you, this county attorney, it isn't you. And it's one person. And so since there are no rules, I would say the rule is he runs the meeting. And it should be respected. And if you can't understand that, I'd like you to go research it and present me the research where I'm wrong. But I don't want any more opinions from you that you don't have the material backing you up. I'm still looking for one you told me would do from about a month ago. And I haven't seen that research either. So we've moved on from that. But I'm all for decorum, uh, Mr. Coats. And I'm all for respect for my fellow commissioners and the chairman who runs the show, even though I may or may not agree with what he says, but he's the one who's the chairman. And he, he runs the meeting. But we do need to, uh, obviously dissolve some board here. And so I'd like to do that at some point in time. But I'm still confused about, first of all, I'm confused uh, about the new board and the status of it. And then I'm confused about the current board and them not, I guess, feeling like they could come to us for questions and see what should be done. And I do think that the parks, the parks does have, have some problems. For one thing, I'm not in favor of raising the rates out there this year. And I would like to get a, a board of, of our citizens to get appointed that look into these matters deeply and then uh, take control of that. Cause I don't want to be on this county board either. I'm on it. And I had, there was no meeting, Mr. uh, Mr. Nicolason, where anybody said, who got what, what, uh, how many years or whatever it was handed out. I was told I had a one-year deal. You guys had a meeting I wasn't, I didn't even know about. I'm assuming because I didn't attend any meeting. And you, and the way to do that, the way to do that stagger was to just put the staggering numbers in a jar and everybody reach in and grab one and whatever they grab, that's the number they get. But you assigned those numbers and I never agreed to that. Well, who, who gave me a one year?
Gentlemen, 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 gentleman. That's, that's.
Who did?
A gentleman.
Who did?
Gentleman, we're, that's enough. There's enough. Let's get back on the subject. Let's talk about this. And if you choose to make a motion, go ahead.
I'd make a motion to dissolve the Parks Advisory Board.
And I would second.
Any other discussion on that?
I, I think that it would clarify this relationship. I think that our bylaws that haven't been finalized, but they're pretty close envision sub-boards, subcommittees, task forces, um, whether it's on a specific case by case basis. Maybe we've got a mountain project we need some expertise on. Maybe we've got a lake project we need expertise on. I, I think there'll be lots of opportunity for that. This is not going to be a board of county commissioners run Parks Board. I think there, five of us are in agreement on that completely. This is going to be citizens who are professionals and experts in the field. And, and some of the Parks Board advisory members that are in this room would well qualify, in my humble opinion, to be on this statutory board. There are other people in this room that also might qualify to be on that board. We're not trying to get in your way. And I'm sorry that there hasn't been any communication for the most part from your board to our board for the last 12 months. That, I guess I could have attended more of your meetings than just watching them. And I did watch your meeting last week. And I appreciate how you, you gentlemen and lady are in kind of a difficult situation. It's like, well, you know, what are we, what are we here for? Those are my words, but um, I can appreciate the position that you've been put in. And I, I want to put that to rest now. And that's why I think we move forward with the dissolution and we get as quickly as possible these board members, us, off that Parks Board and get people like you on it. And, and I, I would be one of the first to get off of our Nitrone County Parks Board to make room for one of you. So that's why I think that today it is appropriate to go ahead and move forward with it. Um, we, we were told by the sheriff, we had a big problem last year in terms of enforceability. That was the big thing that made us act in August. Um, and kind of act in a way that was emergency and I mean, you, you all saw that. This isn't, we want to get, we want to, I want to tear the vanity off as quickly as possible and get to the point where we're running these parks in the manner in which they deserve. I feel strongly that, that we can do a better job as a community. And it's only going to help us in every regard. Our kids are going to want to stay here if we have better parks. We're going to be bringing in more tourism dollars. So I think there's a lot of potential and I, and I want to get us out of the way. And I think this is just one of those maybe somewhat painful steps in the process to get there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Laird.
So here's my question. So if we, if we dissolve this Parks Board today, do we have a Parks Board that's functioning presently? Well, I'm hearing the chairman say no. So I, I, I would like to have it explained to me because I thought we were going to get this current board that we're all on functioning. And then we were going to figure out how to uh, get other people on it so that we could resign from it. I can't resign fast enough from. But I, I stayed on it and I said I would be the secretary just for the purposes of getting it organized properly so that we can turn it over to the citizenry. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's able to be turned over to the citizenry tonight. I'd like to see that happen in conjunction with the dissolution. Because it's just all these loose ends, uh, Mr. Nicolason. I really don't disagree with most of what you've said. Except I had no knowledge that I was being put on this other board and for how long. I was never consulted. And so uh, these things happen. And in this situation, I think the chairman runs the show. I think the statute says it. And I'm a, we're a statutory board and I, I'm, I'm an attorney. You're an attorney. I'm sworn to uphold the law. So whatever that law is right now, that's what I'm going to follow.
Chairman. Hey, Mr. Chairman. So again, I, again, I go back to the, to what the advisory board does. It advises, it has no authority beyond what we give it as B O C C. The statutory Parks Board, which is functioning to a point that we are receiving public comment. I didn't see public comment in, in the Parks Board last meeting. It's already coming to the trustee board meetings. I would say if it's a concern of Commissioner Laird's that we have not adopted those bylaws, that we have a special meeting for the Parks Trustee Board to adopt those bylaws, move the cart along. That way us that want to actually get off the board and turn it over to the citizens are able to. Once those bylaws are in place, we have a director already in place. He'll be able to step right into that role with the Parks Board. We've got willing, I'm, I'm sure you're willing to be on the trustee board, right? Or would you rather be on a board that has no authority? I think you had, if that was me, I'd rather be on a board that has the authority to only make the plans with my director, devise the policies, complete those projects rather than just, eh, we think this should happen. What do you, will you guys do it? No? Well, that sucked. Which is kind of where you guys have been for the last couple of years. You've been left out of loop on, on a lot of decisions being made up here that needed to be made by citizens grassroots, statutory board for the parks. So I think we need to move the cart along. That is why I've seconded it. We dissolution the advisory board. We, as a not B O C C, but as the trustees, we schedule a meeting, a special meeting, adopt those rules or modify and adopt those rules, whatever. But let's get this thing moving.
Mr. Coats.
So I have some just general commentary, looking through the um, packet. It looks like there's, there's been a lot of back and forth as far as the, the Parks Board goes. Dissolution. And then a, it looks like there was a B O C C meeting where there was a an attempt to rectify what had been done basically in response to the Attorney General's opinion. And I'm county attorney. Just for clarification on this, I had contacted the Secretary of State as well. And in my findings, it appears that the statutory Parks Board approved in twenty twenty-four is the only thing that has been filed. To your knowledge, was the, the prior one that was established in nineteen fifty-seven, was that sufficiently dissolved?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Coats, no. At, at the time that it was dissolved, it, it wouldn't have been properly dissolved because there wasn't a statutory provision that permitted that. However, it's, it just ceased to function and exist. So it ceased to be in existence.
So what was put into place in uh, July or August of twenty-four? It is satisfactory to what is required?
Yes, it complies with the statute. Commissioner Coats, yes.
So that being said, with the advisory board strictly being an advisory function with no real powers to, I guess, aid the public and what the public's, you know, desires are for the, for our board of trustees to move forward with, I see no reason to continue with an advisory board at this point in time.
Heather, did you say that at the time, the uh, that it was dissolved in nineteen ninety-five, that there was not a statute that covered that? That there wasn't, because there was something that was very specific that was listed in their county attorneys uh, in the, in the B O C C notes saying that they had adhered to the hundred and twenty days. And that also has to be a hearing associated with that. And I don't see any documentation of any hearing that occurred during that. I don't see, and I, and when I did call down to the uh, Secretary of State's office, they didn't say that they had, they couldn't find it. And they said the biggest problem was most of their, most of their information down there is off carbon paper and they're, and it's in a file and they're still going through it. They requested that they have a few days to go through and look through everything to make sure that we had all that information when I talked to them. That's my reasoning for postponing this decision is because we do not have, in my opinion, we don't have all the information that we need at this point to find out if the original board was even dissolved legally.
Mr. Chairman, that statutory change that added the ability to dissolve a fair board, a Parks Board or the airport board didn't come about until after a twenty twenty Supreme Court case. There was no provision to dissolve a board of trustees in nineteen ninety-five when this commission or the commissioners at that time did that.
Okay.
And then Laramie County attempted to dissolve their fair board uh, around, you know, twenty twenty or, or before that. It went to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court at that time said that, that, that you didn't have the, the commissioners didn't have the ability to do that at that time. That the legislative change came after that decision. And so it's, it's pretty new. So there was not a hearing requirement in nineteen ninety-five.
Okay. All right. So what was that, that they said that they were, that they were referring to, that they had a hundred and twenty days? What would that have been?
I'm, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman. I'd have to take a look and see if I can find.
Because that was specifically noted in the B O C minutes by Eric Easton at the time.
Sorry.
So.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mellon.
So at the time that this board, not this board, but a board of Nitrone County Commissioners dissolved the statutory Parks Board and then ten years later created an advisory board. And then thirty years later, basically from the dissolution of the statutory board to the creation of this new one, the, the old Parks Board apparently has been in violation for thirty years now of not holding meetings or doing any of the public works. I would say that that board is, is, is obviously defunct. I mean, would we put in the old members that were in the board at the time that it was dissolved? No, they may not even be around. So this county has to move forward. And the option and that what we are pursuing currently is the best.
The reappointment of board members was done and it, and it's in the record as far as who they are. So I understand what you're saying, but I'm, I'm saying that there is information out there that we don't have. That is what I'm saying. And uh, you know, that's the reason why it's not going to take that long to find out the information. And wait until we hear back from the state and make that decision at that point in time. So that's all I'm saying.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm continually confused by what everybody says here. So we have a partially formed Parks Board. It hasn't been completed yet. Am I right so far?
Yes.
Our legal counsel said it's not true.
Pardon me?
Our attorney just said, no, that's not true.
It, it's fully, Commissioner, Chairman North, Commissioner Laird, it's fully formed that we just haven't adopted bylaws as of yet, but it, but the board itself is properly constituted.
But what we need to, to make it official, what do we have left to do?
But you've done it already. You did that in August. You don't have to do anything else.
You don't have to have bylaws?
You don't. I think it's a good practice, but you don't have to, to operate.
That would surprise me. Do you have something that backs that up? I just want to get it done properly. Do you have something that backs that up? I just want to get it done properly. And what I, so what, why do I need to know about the historical nature of the current advisory board, Mr. Chairman, before I would, whether, because I'm, I think it, it needs to be dissolved. I don't think that it's going to stay undissolved for very long. What I kept thinking in my mind is when all of the paperwork was done on the current board, we would dissolve that board and then we would put out notification for people who want to be on the new board. And then we would decide how we're going to handle that, which is still kind of up in the air to me because every, because of the requirement for the board members to have differing timeframes of when they retire from the board. And so it seems like all of that's pretty easy to solve. Now, whether we do it tonight or we, we make sure that paperwork on the current board is all done, which is what I would really like to see, the bylaws adopted, all of that. I, I can't believe the board with no bylaws and rules and all of that. I think that would be improper for me as a commissioner to, to think that that's going to take over. We're the ones who run the show here. Five people here run the show. So I would like to get everything coordinated, asked, done, and people appointed sometime before the next 60 days, 30 days. Next week. I'd just like to see it done properly.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason.
To me, the question is on the pending motion, does the Board of County Commissioners have the legal ability to dissolve the advisory board? I don't think there's any question about that. I also don't think there's any question that the Parks Board that we constituted in August of last year is properly constituted. The statute doesn't contemplate bylaws, although to Commissioner Laird's concern, I think we worked through at our last meeting, um, all of the issues and it was just a matter of getting the document cleaned up so that it could be part of our, our next meeting on the fifth or the fourth, the fifth of March, um, to have it in there. So I, I don't think that, I think it's almost a red herring to be overly focused on the, the Parks Board stuff that was going on from the late 90s through the 2000s. So that's why I think we can move forward with the, um, the motion today.
Personally, I believe I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Laird on this. So that's just my feeling. I'm not saying that at some point in time, it's not going to happen. But I'm just saying that right now, I don't believe it's the right time. So. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
I've been waiting.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Mallon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd call for a question.
Okay. Is that all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Next item up is everybody's had a chance to take a look and at the staple receipt disposal. And I just wondered if anybody, if, if this commission did, wants to take a position on that or not. It's a loss of approximately 3,500 acres. That's currently state land that, uh, would be private.
You all should have received the maps that I asked to be created so that you could view where and what, what the property was. My question to the state is why? Is there being a land exchange, which, which does occur at times? And if it's like for like? Or are we just straight up selling, uh, public property for, to a private individual for, for no reason? Or, or what's going on? Their letter of intent was minimal. I didn't, I didn't get it.
It, it was very vague and I, I agree with you on that. I, I'm agreeing with you 100% on this.
So until we got further information, I, I don't think we can support or, or support it honestly.
Because, yeah, because we haven't got a lot of information. The information I've gotten from talking to, to different individuals is that, that is just going to be a sale, taking state land and, and selling it to a private individual. And it will take it off the availability. That's all I have seen. So I, I can't say anything else about that. That's, that's as much as I can, I can tell you. So.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason.
I'm sure if you were done.
No, I was done. I was done. I was just looking.
Then Commissioner Laird also sensed, I think, the, the pause. And so, um, I would defer to Commissioner Laird though, if he'd like to go first.
Uh, well, it seems to me like we should just table this matter tonight till there's further information and not waste any more time on it. So I would move, we table it till a future time. We're not here to take action on it anyway. I don't think.
We can't take, we can't table it very long because we have a limited timeframe that we can respond to the state saying, that's the reason why I wanted to bring this up now is so that now if you, if you want to, we can, we can work it in a different manner and you can look at it a little bit more intensely and you can get back individually. And we can, we can take it that way. But we do need to take an action fairly soon and send a, send a letter to the state, whether we either support, don't support, or we're neutral. So that's, okay, I'm done.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at the letter from the Office of State Lands. And, and it says, please respond as, uh, at earliest convenience, as this information will be included in our detailed analysis of the disposal and presented to the public. My initial assumption is that the landowner nominated lands, uh, for acquisition, which anybody can do, that they are probably the grazing lessee, the staple three ranch is owned by the Allman family and it's a large ranch in the northern part of the county. And, um, I feel that there's no apparent public access to that land, but I don't know that for certain. I have not been contacted by anybody that says this is a problem for the county or for members of the public. My feeling is that we send a response letter back and it, it says, based upon the limited information we have at the present time, we cannot take a position on whether the, the land is sold or not, something to that effect. But then also say, please send us at your earliest convenience, a copy of the detailed analysis for our further consideration. So that I think then essentially, you know, kind of tables it, but it tells them that we don't have enough, that we're expecting more and we may or may not have an issue.
Adam Attorney, did you get all that? Okay. All right. I don't, I don't disagree with that. So I think that would be a, a, a valid response. So does everybody, is everybody in agreement on that? That's all I wanted to do is just bring it up for discussion so that we have that. So, okay. Anything else on that? All right. We will move on to legal updates.
Rita? Me, I guess it is already. Sorry, that's a little short, but that's okay.
Low rider.
Right, short and sweet, hopefully. Last B O C C meeting, this was on the agenda, but I was unable to make that meeting. And so this is what I would call a final draft of our resolution to establish uniform procedures, costs and charges for the inspecting, copying, and producing public records pursuant to the Public Records Act. It's, it's sort of twofold at this point. In order for us to charge for public records, if we chose to do so, we have to have, you know, we have to have a resolution in place. So that is part of it. But as time went on and we realized we were going to upgrade our public records request system to online, then this sort of went on standby until we could incorporate that policy in this as well. And there's a couple of places where I didn't have the information, such as the name of the exact system when I emailed it to you all. But I wanted you to have that because I can easily plug that in. This is also, I think, the third draft. And so all the changes that were requested had been made. Plus again, I added essentially the procedure for requesting records online. And this will actually need to go out for public comment. So I guess I'm just getting a feel if you all approve this draft to go out for public comment.
Commissioners, thoughts?
I just had one.
Commissioner Laird.
Where you say whereas a county department or elected officials' office may waive any of the fees below at their discretion. Uh, that could be a problem, couldn't it?
Well, statutorily different, I believe the clerk's office and a couple other departments or elected officials offices, they have their own set of rules and regulations or statutes or policies. I'm not quite sure. For example, the clerk's office, I know they have statutory, Jill Keister has statutory. And there is the discretion built in there because there was concern. I think, I don't think it's a problem. I think that, that, that was built in there for concerns such as someone comes in and wants a copy of, a one-page copy of their deed or some other documents. That whomever's in charge of that department, if they have the policies, would be able to waive that. That, that was some of the feedback that I received from the commissioners, as well as I believe one citizen spoke to Michelle. I wasn't there, but that's what was relayed to me. So that takes care of that issue.
Yeah, but I still think it can be interpreted kind of weirdly.
Okay. Do you have a suggestion for rewording it?
Some little lady goes in there and then she's charged and then her friend goes in there and she's not charged. What was the discretionary point?
Well, for example, uh, the clerk's office has their own policy, which could be different than a similar document for the clerk's office.
I think if you're going to give it to one, you give it to them all.
And that's fine. It's up to you all. Or if you want to leave it out for public comment to see. I agree. It is, it could be a strict, a slippery slope. However, the feedback that I received was we don't want that happening.
It's just, I think, a problem. It could be discriminatory. I don't think our people would do that, but it could be looked upon that way by somebody who they say, well, you let my neighbor, you know, have 10 things free and I had to pay for one page.
Right. And I think another concern was, you know, someone comes in, wants a one-page document, it's already there. Caught charging them, you know, charging everyone.
Didn't we say we'd give them five pages free anyway?
Right. We have 10 pages, the first 10, yes. And then there's a 50%.
Be an issue.
Right. I, I mean.
So the issue is, is if somebody had 100 pages and they got it free.
Sure.
Somebody else didn't.
Right. And unfortunately, for example, we can't change the statute in the clerk's office, or if, say, Ms. Salisbury wanted to enact her own policy.
Why, why can't we just take that out of the resolution?
That's fine. That would mean everyone would be required to be charged pursuant to the.
It should go straight down the line.
Okay.
I mean, that's my own opinion. I'm, I'm sure people may have a differing view, but I like the idea that I think that Ms. Good runs her own office. I don't think we can tell her what to do when it comes to that.
Commissioner Mallon.
So I understand Commissioner Laird's point. I'd say for right now, just leave it in so that we can get it into public comment.
Right.
And then see what, if the public is concerned about it, see what they say about it. And then we can readdress it at that point when it comes back to us after public comment. But that way we can get this thing going because it's been another thing that's been on the table for quite a while now.
Well, the first draft did, adminly needs some work and then I don't, you know, different things happened with the second. So I believe this is at least a, a really good start to the final draft. I get it. I, I'm for that.
Any other comments, Commissioner Nicolason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How long you been, how many hours you put in on this?
A lot, probably more than we could ever charge someone for all their copies.
Thank you. I know we, we've addressed this at a number of meetings and I think that, uh, it's, it's progressed in a positive direction. My question is, well, it relates to the outside boards. Fair, library, health department, airport. The recital, there's a recital on the first page, it's right in kind of the middle. Uh, to be charged unless otherwise authorized by law by all agencies in Nushona County, including two elected officials, departments, boards and commissioners. So I, it, there's an indication at least that it would be applicable to those outside boards. Is that correct?
There is unless the otherwise authorized by law. So for example, we've talked about the clerk's office. I know I've talked with the sheriff's department. They have their own policy. Ms. Keister, I believe, has her own policy. And I think this is just letting everybody know, you know, the included but not limited to, that way in case a board does not have a policy. And for example, the clerk's office does not have to follow this because they have their own. That's the way we understand it and we've researched it. Or let's, Ms. Salisbury, but I don't believe the Sessors Office has one.
So, so what I would ask, um, on page four of this proposal, it says in bold or all caps, departments and elected officials may have their own policies regarding public records requests. We ought to add the word boards.
Oh, sure. Right.
And then in paragraph three, right above that, where it says payments, it says departments and elected officials may have their own policies and procedures.
Sure.
We, we ought to, we ought to put it in there too. But then I'd ask you to, maybe go back to it one more time and, you know, if, if we don't say boards all the way through, then I think it's confusing if we do say departments instead of Nushona County and all its constituent parts.
Okay.
Agencies. So however, I just think that we want to avoid confusion there so that the applicability is clear.
I agree. And it sometimes does get confusing because of course we represent them. So they might have a question on a public records request, but it's, you know, going through their procedures, not ours. So, I mean, we'll have to see how it all works out with the new system. I know that Ms. Keister, I didn't think would be on the new, or utilizing the new system. I'm not quite sure. Uh, the clerk's shaking her head no. So there'll be some glitches to work out, but I can definitely make that change. In Dallas, we can mark this for our next public comment and maybe we'll have some public comment on it. Okay. Thank you guys so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have you got anything else to add?
No, Mr. Chairman, just if there's any questions on, uh, the items that are on the consent agenda, um, I'm happy to try to answer those, but I don't, I don't have anything. For you other than that.
No, they have to be individual hearings. So I do have a question on the, on the liquor license. Can, do we need to go through each one or can we go through them as a group? I think we've done it both ways in the past.
I hope that you have and, and potentially you've done them by the type of license.
That's, that's what I'm getting at, is it do it by the type of license and go through and then go through them individually. So, uh, and if there's any problem with any of them, then, then we'll address that individually. Does that, does that meet the standard?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think it does.
Okay. Madam Clark, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't want, I don't want to do anything that would irritate either one of you. So, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Eric, Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, tonight on the consent agenda, we have a certificate of substantial completion for the Trail Center. And I see our Parks Director, Mr. Brown here. Um, that's a legally significant, uh, step, um, to accept substantial completion. Are there any issues or concerns? I know it's been serving the public for a short time now. Um, any, I'm, I'm just wondering if Mr. Brown just has a thumbs up or thumbs down. Any, I'm just wondering if Mr. Brown just has a thumbs up or thumbs down on us moving forward.
Well, he's been thumbing up in me every weekend. So is the other guy is up there telling me everything's going great. So I wasn't too worried about it.
Well, I'm not either. It's lovely.
But you can give us an update on the alarm system, if you don't mind.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So I've gone through that substantial completion very thoroughly and I agree with it. There are a few punchless items on there, but most of those have all been taken up, taken care of. The building's operating quite well. We had a few minor, minor clicks that have been taken care of. There was one plumbing issue. Caspar was real quick to respond and take, get their plumber up there for that. And then we had a handicap button. Somebody may have disconnected when we were doing the smart system or it may not have got connected right away, but that's been operational. So we're all good there. I, I agree with that document and that's why I put forth to the commission to sign. The fire alarm system will be tested and inspected this Friday. So it's all installed and ready to go. So we're just waiting on the county fire marshal to review that and give us a actual maximum occupancy based off the new system.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, not on that, but can we circle back to the liquor licenses if you don't mind?
Okay.
On the agenda, originally the renewal for the airport liquor license was under restaurant. And then it had inadvertently been moved up to package, when in fact it needs to be under the full retail. It is considered a full retail, however, it is, has its own statute. So just for clarification on that, thank you.
Okay, so we need to move. Let me find that real quick.
I think it's number 10.
Okay. All right, so we'll just move that up into the, the full, the full retail then.
Right, thank you.
I guess, do we need to amend the, the, the agenda then to move that up?
I'm going to try and get it done right now.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Have we got anything else? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll be back at 5:30 to get started.
It depends on the day. He was nonstop in it and then training to make sure that, that the YouTube went, or the IT.
Hey, Jim, Jim. Okay, all right, we're back in order. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Consent agenda. I move we accept the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Laird, seconded by Commissioner Nicolason. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. All right, service awards. Tonight's the night that we recognize our, our employees. For the five-year awards, we have Daniel, Darren Keister, Tina Porter, Daniel Krucheck, Karen Nail, Brad Morrison, Shelby Trotter, James Hunter, Gregory Killren, Ted Summer. And I prob, I, yeah, I apologize if I assassinate anybody's names. Deanne Bergen, Dulcie Garcia, Teresa Sheets, Esteban Gonzalez, Amanda Strong, Kristy Clark, Leanne McDonald, Corley Crumrin. Sorry if I assassinated that one, I'm sure I did. Anya Nolan and Shelley Smith. For our 10-year awards, we have Crystal Wallace, Lisa Brown, Richard Walker, Amy Ray, Tracy Cock, Cockerman, Thomas Muniz, Wendy Crowe, Reed Faulkner, Rose Jones, Cody Decker, Andrea Florence, Ariane Limbeck, Amanda May. For 15 years, we have Cory Brooks, Lisa Lauderdale, Krista Reed, Christina Adams, James Hinkle, Amanda Fink, Angela Berry, Leon Baines. Moving up to the 20-year awards. Melanie Bros, Katie Preciado, Chad Beckett, Casey Courtney, Shelley Woods, Charles Beth, Bessie O'Neil, Wendy Stockman and Taylor Courtney. And we have a few that have been here with this county for 25 years, which I want to congratulate them. That's longer than most people ever work anywhere anymore. So that's very impressive. Bart Olson, who's with our sheriff's department, Fred Parsons with the library, Ruth Held with the health department. And we even have a 30-year employee, which is amazing. And that's Carrie Hunt, CSC. I want to thank you and I appreciate if you guys all give them applause for the time that they've been with this county.
And we really do appreciate our employees.
So, all right. With that, we will move into the contractor agreements and resolutions. Down here and find those. Guess those are all, I thought those were all, those are all on the consent agenda. So I guess we don't have to worry about that. And then we'll have the public hearing. Do we have any other contracts on there? Okay, all right, sorry, good. I'm glad, I was afraid I was missing something there. We'll move down into the application for liquor, liquor license renewals. Madam Clark, would you give us a report, please?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. At this time, there are 17 liquor licenses presented for renewal. This includes nine full retail liquor licenses, two limited retail licenses, three county malt beverage licenses, two restaurant licenses, and one airport retail liquor license. Notices have been sent to the sheriff's department, health department, county fire and Nushona County planning and zoning, and no objections have been made to me to date. As I stated in my memo, attached documentation are sheriff calls or calls provided by Sheriff Harland for the past year at these respective locations. And the only changes to note is that Tavant LLC now holds a restaurant license instead of a full retail license. And they have changed their DBA name from Sideline Sports Bar Grill and Venue to Max Smokehouse Grill and Sports Bar. They did provide that name change in an affidavit, which I received and sent on to the liquor division, which is all that needs to be done. Also, all publication requirements have been met. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Have we got any questions for the clerk? Okay, we will move on to the full retail. We have, I'm going to go through and name them all. And if you have any questions about any of them, please bring that up. Alcoa Resort, On the Rocks, The Shoeing Ink, Celine Moss, Moss. Seasons Hall, LC, LC, Trout on the Anne, BFS, Official, and BOT, Casper and Nushona County Airport. Any questions about any of those? Do I have a motion for approval of those?
I move we approve all the ones read under.
Oh, all right, sorry about that. Do we have any, sorry, at this point in time, do we have anybody that wishes to speak for any of those or against any of those? Or first? Okay, any against? All right, at this, at this point in time, none for and none against on the record. So this time we'll take a motion for approval of those.
I move we approve all of the liquor licenses that you just read.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. All right, our next ones will be the packaged liquor only. We have Gray Reef Outfitters, Trophy Trout Outfitters. Do we have any that are for? Any of those that we just, wish to speak for those? Any for? Okay, one more time. Any against? Any against? Last time, any against? Okay, do we have a motion to approve liquor license for packaged only?
I move we accept the liquor licenses for package only.
Second? Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the limited retail. We have Casper Boat Club and Casper Country Club. Those who wish to speak in favor of those, please come forward. Those who wish to speak in favor of, please come forward. Last time, those who speak in favor, huh? This is for Gray Reef Outfitter or Trophy Trout Outfitter. Okay, okay, all right. Have you none that wants to speak for? Any that wants to speak against? Any that want to speak against any of those? Last time, any that want to speak against any of those? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll keep making the motion, I have most, I move we approve Casper Boat Club and Casper Country Club.
Okay, for the limited retail, do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Next will be the malt beverage. We have Black Ops LC, Natrona County Fair Association, Pathfinder Boat and Fishing Club. All that want to speak in favor of, please come to the lectern. All in favor, please come forward. For the last time, all in favor, please come forward. Okay, all opposed, please come forward. All opposed, please come forward. For the last time, all opposed, please come forward. Alright, do we have a motion to approve the limited retail, or the malt beverage liquor license?
I move that we approve the three malt beverage applicants that you just mentioned.
One second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Last one we'll have will be the restaurant license. That will be Casper. Jim, can you help me on that one? Medical, thank you, appreciate that. Tavon LLC. All those in favor to speak in favor of, please come forward. All in favor, please come forward. All in favor, please come forward. Okay, all those opposed, please come forward. All opposed, please come forward. Alright, last call, all opposed, please come forward. Alright, having none, no comments, do we have a motion to approve the restaurant liquor license?
I move we approve the two liquor licenses under restaurant.
Second?
And with addition, the correction to the name to LLC, according to what the clerk said on that, so, alright, all in favor, say aye. Alright, so moved. Alright, we will have. Resolution seven dash twenty-five, transfer of funds. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, for your approval is resolution seven dash twenty-five. It is a balance, funds transfer balance from the balance sheet cash reserve in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-four cents to various account lines that are notated in the resolution. This, these account lines represent the salary lines and the applicable budget or burden lines that go with these impacted lines for the employee bonuses that were paid after the fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five budget was approved. These bonuses were paid in December of twenty twenty-four, so this is basically a cleanup resolution to get those funds into those appropriate account lines for the budget. I'll stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions? Okay, I would ask any of those that want to speak for this resolution to come to the lectern. Any in favor, come forward and speak on this. For the last time, any in favor of speaking for this resolution? Okay, none heard? Any of those that are opposed for this resolution, please come forward? Any opposed, please come forward? For the last time, any opposed, please come forward? Okay, with no comment recorded, do we have a? A motion to approve?
No motion.
Second.
Okay, motion approved, or motion made by Commissioner Nicolason, seconded by Commissioner Laird, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Alright, with that, we will move on to Commissioner Comments. Oh, yeah, public comment, sorry. So we'll start out with public comment, please come to the lectern and state your name and address.
This is Han, yes it is. Bruce Lambersen, excuse me, twenty-four, forty-nine, Hogdon Road. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. I want to address someone who went on about a couple hours ago. And there's been some discussion about what happened thirty-five years ago with the Parks Board. Which I don't know about the relevance, but I think we should speak accurately about what went on. I was there. The chairman's been asked about this, what happened to the first board? Why were they disbanded? He answered embezzlement, one word. That's not true. I was there. There was a case of embezzlement with the parks in the early nineties, a secretary. Name names, took some camping fees. The matter was turned over to Sheriff Dave DiValla. He took care of it. The person was replaced. Life went on. Meanwhile, what was happening is the family of the director of the parks at the time, and the families of one of the commissioners were at odds with each other. It was well-known at the time, and there was friction, okay? There wasn't much going on in the county parks at the time, the state, the city, the county were all broke. And the commissioners acquiesced to the one commissioner who had some friction with the parks director. And they shifted, they got rid of the whole thing, okay? Couple weeks later, they realized there was no one running the parks. Jim Sullivan, who was longtime manager of Roden Bridge, or chairman, or whatever, director of Roden Bridge, took on some of the prior staff and operated the Parks Board, moving forward as a division of Roden Bridge. Some years later, Jim Sullivan retired, Mike Hagler became the director of Roden Bridge and Parks, and needed help, and the commissioners passed a resolution to form an advisory board. The next twenty-five years or whatever, that board did well, did not well, functioned well, finally just lost interest and, you know, it turned into not an effective, pardon, pardon, guys, I know you tried, but not an effective body for managing the parks, because during that time, we had four different parks directors, Mr. Hagler in between as the interim, which has just been a mess. So anyway, but it wasn't embezzlement, it was other things. And it doesn't really matter now, I hope we're done with that, but I don't like the misinformation. And if anybody thinks I'm wrong, that's fine, talk to me. It won't work well. But anyway, bylaws are coming at you. We finally have taken since August a positive step for the Board of Trustees to run these parks. And I have no idea, well, I do have an idea, but it's shameful that it's taken this long to happen, but we've made step number one, and I agree with those who voted for dismissing the advisory board, that it was something had to be done. Next step is bylaws, for sure. And I don't know exactly where that is, and I'm gonna run out of time, but I'll make it quick. Seven-member board, please, not five to nine. The parks are huge, we manage lakes, mountains, campgrounds, facilities. You need a seven-member board to cover the ground and to get the best team on the field for all these different, I mean, if you compare it to, say, the library, or the fair, or the airport, parks is way more diverse. And I'm not knocking those boards, but you need a seven-member board, I think so, and to say in five to nine, I'd rather just say seven and we get on with it. That would also open up a couple seats for, you know, the public to serve on. And so I'd suggest that, and I'll write an email later on this. The other thing is commissioner member on the board, that's come up. All of your statutory boards, not joint powers boards, but the library, the fair, the airport, health, and I don't know if that's joint power, does not have a voting member of the commission on it. There's reason for that, and Michael Brown brought this up at the last meeting, how do you stagger a term when you guys are up for election and a change is bid? You know, it's a mess, and I think we get seven effective members on there, and we need a really good liaison to the commission, who's interested, paying attention, participating, but not voting. So I'd suggest that become a part of the bylaws. And there was one other thing, oh yeah, residents requirements. Again, let's get the best team on the field, they should live in Natrona County. To limit that to, we need three from the county, and two from the city, and one from Mills, or whatever, I don't care about that, that's, that doesn't allow you to put together the board you need. I'd say seven members, residents of Natrona County, and get all this in the bylaws now, so there's direction for the trustees as we start this turnover. But anyway, those of you who voted to dismiss the advisors, thank you. We need to get moving, it's time to fish or cut bait on this whole thing, because the parks have been languishing for decades, and this is the first positive step I've seen in a long time. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else for public comment?
Jim Miller, thirteen oh one, Beaumont Drive, eight two six oh one. I've been on the advisory board for thirty years. And I've taken care of you guys like no other, I've been the ear, ears and the eyes up there. And this board is the first board, except Dave North has never contacted me. Not one of you have not contacted me to what's going on on that mountain, and I regret that. You've, you've talked to people who are not there anymore. Bruce Lambersen, I asked you to talk to him, but you haven't talked to me at all. And I know that trail system up there, the sheriff department calls me when they need to search and rescue, because I know that area. They don't know that area. I've been called on two different rescues, but yet you still don't call. I don't quite understand that. I've worked with the previous boards, and they've all talked to me. You have not. I don't understand it. You can apologize, but that doesn't do any good. I don't know why you haven't come to me, or one of the board members, advisory board, and say, what's going on up there? You know, I know you want this other board, but I know exactly what's gonna take place, you're gonna put your own people in there? There's gonna be people that are gonna get in there, or ask to be in there, and you're gonna put your puppets in there? And that's not right, to have your own little puppets in there, to say what you want, and then they carry it over. And I'm not sure how many advisory board members want to be on this board, because I am not a puppet, and I think you guys know that, every one of you. I voted for each one of you guys to represent this, this county. And what I saw tonight, I thought, wow, isn't that something? I am sorry the way this is going. Right now, I am the representative of the mountain, and I've talked to Dave quite a bit, I talked to Mike quite a bit, and I do a lot of talking with the community. I get a call two or three times a week on people that say, what's going on on the mountain? I, I send that to Dave, I send it to Mike. But yet, I don't hear anything from you. I hear that you're going to other people, but I don't understand why you haven't gone to me, or any of the advisory board. You, as far as I know, you don't have much interest in the lake, because I haven't heard much. The mountain is, 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 I take it, the mountain I care for. I take it because I've worked there for thirty years, I've coached, I've taught, and I've taken care of the community. And I'm sorry that you haven't talked to me at all. Like I said, I've talked to sheriff department, I've talked to legal, we had legal come to every one of our meetings, and they were quite involved. I just don't understand why this has happened with this group. I'm sorry. Any questions?
Jim, I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate the work that you've done up there on that mountain, and being on the, on the, on the board as long as you have been. I, I know what your contributions have been, and I know a lot of people up on the mountain that know that too, and with the Trail Center, with the, the ski, you know, the Nordic skiing and everything else, I know how involved you've been in that, and I really do appreciate everything you've done up there, and I just want to make sure that you know that.
I'm part of the community, and that's why I do it, and that's why I helped build that lodge. Just something that I really feel, feel real strongly about.
Yeah. Commissioner Nicolson, or, sorry, Commissioner Laird?
So, you know, I, I've heard what you had to say, so I'm not gonna apologize to you, but I am gonna tell you probably why I never called you or anything, because Mr. North is the liaison for the Parks Board, and so I don't like, I don't like these other guys, they're all liaisons, I don't go to their board meetings, I don't call their people either, because they're taking care of it. And, and Dave does tell me a lot about what goes on in the mountain. So, not talking to you had nothing to do with who you are, or anything, I, I hope you apply for this board that's coming up. And I don't want any puppets. I, I don't want, I want somebody who knows what, what's going on in the mountain, what's going on at the lake, going on everywhere. And I do have people, I think, that know a lot about what's going on in the mountain that I do talk to. And I no more wanted to be on the, the Parks Board than the man and the moon. It was, was part of my duties here to get this thing started. Now, I don't know that I agree with the comment concerning whether there should be seven members, I think that can be too much, I've seen boards with nine members, and it just seems like some things are in disarray, and they can't get things done as quickly, I think five, we're, we're a five-member board, and so that's plenty, in my humble opinion, that's just my personal opinion. But, and I've been told of the work you do up there, and I'm glad you came down here so I could meet you, but you never called me either. Now, I hold myself open to everybody. They come down to my office and walk right in, and they sit down if I don't have a client, and we talk, and sometimes it's a couple-hour discussion. Sometimes I don't get a phone call returned right away, because I've got about nine hundred of them on my messages from the county phone. But, but like I was the liaison for the library. Rarely, other than Mr. Nicolason occasionally, does anybody talk to the people from that board, or other boards that I'm on. And so, just so you know, that's how we do it here, and so if you get a liaison for this new board coming up, it's gonna be one of these five guys, it isn't gonna be me, because I don't want that job, I just don't feel like I know enough about what's going on in the mountain. What I'm gonna rely on is I'm gonna help pick the people to get on that board, and I'm going to, I don't, and I, I do want them to live in Natrona County, obviously, I don't want to pick anybody that isn't from Natrona County, or has some sort of a problem with having a city job or something else that might interfere here. So, so we rely on each other to a certain extent, but there is one thing I'm gonna apologize about. There's been a time or two I don't act like a gentleman in here, I let my emotions get to me. I was born and raised here. I care about the Natrona County people. And I, I believe that I know who I owe my allegiance to when I took my oath. And that's Natrona County people, and that's who's gonna get it. And I'm gonna listen to them fairly. And sometimes it's Natrona County people versus Natrona County people, and that's the tough situation then, where I have to make a decision, because we have to apply the law fairly to everybody who comes in here. And I intend to do that, I took an oath. I took an oath to do that. Took two oaths actually, one being a lawyer and one being a county commissioner. So I'm hoping that these gentlemen here are going to be gentlemen from now on. And I have a great deal of respect for Mr. Nicolason, a very smart guy. I knew his dad, went to, went to school with his dad from grade school on. So sometimes, sometimes things just get a little haywire. We'll get it, we'll get it straightened out. Dave North's a hardworking guy. He goes to more meetings than anybody I know. Casey's a very smart guy. He's, 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 you know, he, there's a road named after his family that's having troubles right now that we have to deal with at some point. So, and then we have, I don't know how many total employees we have in the county, but it's several hundred. And I respect and admire all of them. I wish we could pay them all more money. We have to, we have to deal with our tax rates and what we're doing here. I don't like raising, I don't like to see taxes raised. We really don't have much effect of raising taxes. That, that's the state that does that. Jim Millen, he's a pretty good guy. He was deputy sheriff. He was mad at me once when I, when I first, when we first met, he thought I, he thought I represented his wife in a divorce and then he, he found out I didn't. That was thirty-five years ago.
He still mad.
Then he started talking to me again. So, so you know, there, these are all good guys. Do we all agree on everything? No, we don't. And that's really the American way. I think we get along better than the people in Congress get along. I hugged Nicolason in there during one of the breaks.
Did he hug you back?
Yes, he did. And I'm, I've known him since he was a little boy, crying out loud. Known his dad since he was a little boy. I knew Deemer True since he was a little boy. Because I was a little boy too. I know it's hard to believe. Fortunately, I went to law school and I had to become a lawyer, you know? Well, that's the way it is. And I know sometimes I talk too much, but I was raised by, I was raised by lawyers who charged by the word. Need I say more? Thank you.
Well, Dallas, that, Commissioner, thank you for that. But I, in the past, have had, have had commissioners come to me just because I'm up there all the time and understand what's going on. And this group has not. And that's my only, you know, that's what I'm used to. Is the commissioners come in saying, hey, what's going on in the mountain? What is it that you're seeing? What is it that you're not seeing? And I don't have a problem of coming to the director and saying, why isn't this taking place? You know, and it's a one-on-one. Say, come on, we got, this is what I'm seeing up there. Why isn't it taking place? And I get an answer. Sometimes I don't like it, but.
Thank you for what you've done for thirty years or more.
Well, probably will fire me tonight.
You're not being fired.
So I just needed to, to come here and voice my opinion, which I don't very often. And I appreciate what you're doing. That sometimes the community member has come forth and say what they think.
We appreciate it, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rose Mary Saban, Natrona County resident. I hope this is the last time that I got to come in here and say what I'm going to say. I hope you guys have resolved this. Because what I've been seeing going on since the beginning of the year is crap. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. Millen, I'm curious. Are you, are you going to be blunt about everything? So you want to be blunt about you being the only commissioner left that sold our county hospital and lost us four million dollars? And then complain?
We lost four million dollars. I need it in front of me.
I'll find you that. Okay. And then you want to sit in here and you want to complain about property taxes and losing funding?
Our money has lost with Wild Star. You rather us just continue that?
How much is that community health building over budget right now?
Not my thing.
Seventeen and a half million dollars. Are you not a commissioner?
Yes, I am.
Are you not overseeing this county?
Rose, Rose, Rose.
I am not putting up with your stuff. Your, your misalign, your misinformation out there anymore, Rose.
You're, you're misaligned?
Rose, Rose.
You want to say something, you give the facts.
What was this board meeting tonight? What was that, was on, was it on the agenda to, for anything to be voted on tonight?
Does it matter? We decided it was.
Okay, that's enough.
But you decided.
We're going to be civil about this. And if we can't be civil, then we'll conclude this meeting right now.
You called question.
Yes, I did.
And you forced their hands.
Absolutely.
Why was there no public comment?
Why would there be?
Why wouldn't there be? There's concerns, there are concerns with the statutory board.
Yes, there are.
There are. No oversight.
There are a lot of people that want the statutory board to follow the Wyoming State statute as required.
Do I have, do I have the floor for public comment?
Well, if you're going to come at us, then expect this.
That's, that's enough. We're going to have a civil conversation. And, and if we can't, then we'll.
Chairman, there is a point of order. The people should be able to speak and then the commissioners should answer. I don't think we should argue with people at all, but we should answer their questions and have mutual respect.
If there is any respect given to us, that'd be great. Even if it's false?
You can bring that up.
By all means.
By all means. Why'd you vote yes to a solar farm application when you publicly stated that there was health, safety, and welfare concerns? And an incomplete application? You can jot down notes, you can answer me at the end. There were not satisfactory mitigation plans. So I don't understand how you or Nicolason, for that matter, could approve that application and say you're upholding your obligation to protect the residents of Natrona County. I don't get it. Since it was said that that project was in the works for more than two years, did you guys have knowledge of that two years ago? Because I find it a little concerning that a zoning resolution rewrite was adopted and there was a change in the mountain residential to allow for mining when previously it was not permitted. Dinosaur Solar required a conditional use permit. All of a sudden, this doesn't. I, I find it hard to believe that a Colorado firm writing our zoning resolution would make those changes without some sort of direction to do so. Or could have it been after, well, it was passed without a clean copy. A copy wasn't available for thirty to forty-five days. It seems like you guys are always looking to make money, but then you're spending money carelessly, wastefully. So that's my concerns with this statutory board, the no oversight. And Mr. Laird, I, I second your opinion that that should be a small board, as small as possible. Because from what I've seen, watching past videos, Nicolason, it's your friends and your family that are coming in and supporting that. And you've been the ramrod wanting this to be statutory. And I would like to know why. Is it so that money can be spent and things can be beautified without our oversight? And again, Mr. Mr. North, I, I see it on the agenda as a history. I don't see that any voting was going on. And I feel that that should have required public comment. That'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Douglas Irvin. Address is six eight three five South Rotary Park Road. I'm the former chairman of the former advisory board and chairman and the commission. I appreciate your efforts to resolve a longstanding issue with how our parks has been run where the prior boards established reason for existence and its proper functioning has been ignored for many, many years. And the advice and actions that that board was intended to do and how it was supposed to interact with the B O C C was not functioning and was not functioning as it was designed. So I appreciate that we are examining solutions to that problem to hopefully get to a point where our park system and our fantastic public offerings can be properly cared for, maintained, and improved as time and money permits. However, I am very disappointed in the route that we took to get here. Whereas we had an institution, a new institutional knowledge base in that board and it was not being leveraged. In many of the projects over the past five, ten, fifteen years, especially in recent times, the, the knowledge that is available there and the dedicated persons that were in that volunteer board were not being put to any use that could have really benefited the B O C C and served to facilitate the original design structure of that board where we interact with the parks department and the public, try to accrue all the knowledge necessary for making large decisions to improve our community and pass that information along to the B O C C for financial sign off and comments. And that was not being done. And I'm sad about that. And I do feel that there was a distinct lack of respect for the time and energy of all those boards members and the hours that they put in interacting with the public, dealing with fallout from all of the decisions that the B O C C made related to Ponderosa, to park shelters, to demolitions of buildings. And we really bore a lot of the brunt of the public facing interactions for those somewhat negative occurrences. And with the establishment of this board of trustees, again, there was no reach out to the established board to leverage or seek any input or any viewpoints from the people that have been serving in a similar capacity or in Jim's case, multiple decades. And I, I'm saddened that this came to be in this fashion. I'm hopeful that in the future, the new board will be able to better function and achieve great things for the community. I just wanted to express my regrets at how this came to be. Thank you.
Mr. Irving?
Doug. Go ahead.
I appreciate you coming tonight. I appreciate your comment. My feelings on the advisory board and the trustees board is I'd like to see many, if not all of the individuals that are on the advisory board get onto the trustees board. That way we can preserve the institutional knowledge, that we can empower the former advisory boards to manage the mountain, manage the lake, our recreation system as they are much more in tune with it than us here on the B O C C are.
I appreciate that and I'm definitely going to encourage the, everyone that is on the board to apply.
And Doug, I do appreciate everything you've done. I mean, we've worked together when I was on the board and since then as liaison to try to make things better, not only down here, but on the mountain, out at the lake and everywhere else. Hell's Half Acre is a prime example. The work that the board did to try to get that to work through and get the, the grant to do the work out there and get that moving forward, that's something that wasn't done for years. Hell's Half Acre just sat vacant and empty for a long time because people weren't, didn't have any interest in it. You know, when I first got on that board, we had people from the lake, we had people from the mountain, and then we had individuals that were just kind of all over the place that, that were premiered with a lot of different things. And that made a huge difference. And I have seen a change in that, that board over the last several years. You're right though, the institutional knowledge that is on that board right now is very valuable. There's a lot of things out there that, that you guys know about that, you know, everybody has their, has their little area of expertise. And some of them have substantially broader areas of expertise. And that experience needs to be captured. We need to make sure that we don't lose all that in, in what we do with moving forward. You know, it, it's, it's too bad that we've gotten to the point that we are right now in, in several different areas. But I do think that we need to, we need to move forward with, now that, now that the statutory board, board is in place, we need to move forward and make the best out of it that we can and utilize the experience that we have. So I do appreciate everything you've done. I do appreciate everything that board has done to try to make this a better county. So just want to say that.
I appreciate that and I'm sure the board members that were not able to be here appreciate that. And I too am hopeful for the future. And I hope to see the trustees board be involved as you are where you and I were out building the bathrooms out at Ponderosa. That's the kind of boots on the ground, dirt on your hands we need to have and have this community dig in and see what we can do because our parks are amazing gems. We need to maintain them and improve them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others for public comment? Okay. Go to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, advisory board members. As I said earlier this afternoon, as I've said before, I, I appreciate the work that you've done. And I think that the two who spoke tonight did a really eloquent job of, of really kind of talking about the blood, sweat, and tears and, and their passion and love for our parks. And so, you know, I don't want to go back too far, but, but under advice of counsel and in consultation with the sheriff, we felt pressure to do something on an emergency basis last fall. And, you know, proceeding forward, it was certainly, at least in my view, a difficult position to try to balance what the trustees were going to do versus what the advisory board was going to do. And I think that most, if not all, the members on this board have a vision of a board of trustees that is operating these parks at the standard that would meet your expectations. And I think those are high expectations. And I think they should be because I think that everybody in this room recognizes the value and the importance of, of our parks and how they can benefit our current citizens and our, our future generations. I, I'm, I have some regret about how this all happened. I I I'm I have some regret about how this all happened. I think we could have consulted with your Advisory Board a little bit more, especially in kind of the, you know, what do you think about the mountain and what do we need to be doing out here at the lake or whatever? But in terms of trying to just establish a structure of an organization to to get to that discussion, I think we had to do what we did tonight. And I do hope that you and and Mr. Miller understand that this board's practice. I I think we've consistently interviewed and appointed the best members for these boards who are suited for the position at the time. And I know we're going to continue to do that. And so I think that many, if not most, of your board members are going to be best suited to be the the people we appoint for the different experience, whether it's institutional knowledge or passion or all of the above. And so I I hope you do apply. And again, thank you for your service. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mill.
Oh. The innuendos and accusations and different things that came fast and furious, I'll try to answer. And just get it out there. Hospital. Yep, I was on there and I voted to sell it. Having the same information that if I had the same information now as I did then, absolutely do it again. With changes, there is unintended consequences, whether they're good, bad, or indifferent. That hospital was property owned by the county. The operations were not. The operations were being sold. That hospital was going away regardless. They were looking at building a hospital on the east side of town or whatever, leaving us the county a building. I don't think a building serves us much purpose. During the time of the sale, I had many prominent conservative with quotes individuals contact me saying, one, the county shouldn't be a landlord. Please sell it. Two, the county, being the government, shouldn't be involved in my health care and I need them out of it. Please sell it. Three, the government shouldn't compete against private business, whether it's nonprofit or for profit. That was the considerations. A lot of people were telling us that. Yes, we got notification from other people that they didn't want the hospital sold. But again, the operations was being sold regardless if we sold the building or not. We did the absolute best we could with what information we had, with the best legal advice that we could get at the time for that sale. I don't know what to tell you. I didn't hear from you about not selling the hospital. But now you're, you know, people are complaining about it, and so you're upset about it. I get it. I would be too. But the time is not now. The time was then. So we sell the hospital for what people would pay for it. Not it. I could draw a picture and decide it's worth a hundred dollars. People offer me twenty-five dollars for it. Guess what it's worth? It's worth twenty-five dollars. That's just how markets work. Don't know what to tell you. So we could have not sold it, ended up with a building that we have no idea what to do with, had no considerations, no sideboards, no anything that we have established at this point with Title 25, with detention inmate healthcare with all this, these other sideboards. We didn't, they didn't need to do that. They could have just went and bought a bought whatever property and built. But everything was, it wouldn't have mattered whether it was Banner, U C Health, or there was a third one from the east coast that we're that that Wyoming Medical Center was looking at selling their operations for. Again, we were under pressure from Wyoming Medical Center. We were under pressure from prominent citizens to make this deal. We made it. We are where we are. There is a physician shortage, not just in Casper, but in Wyoming overall. To say it was that we have a physician shortage in Casper because we sold the banner is bullshit. It's in Wyoming. We need spe- specials. There are people out there that have to go to Denver, to Salt Lake, to to California, wherever, to see those specialists because we don't have them here. If they had built a hospital on the east side and hot doctors and nurses had migrated to that hospital, even if we had the option to be a Natrona County Memorial Hospital again or whatever, who's going to staff it? Hell, who's going to run it? You? I'm a layman. You keep telling me I'm a layman. I'm not qualified to operate a hospital. You're not oper- you're not qualified to to handle a hospital. We would have to have somebody that we'd be spending a mess of money to come in and manage that hospital. You know, I understand there's concern, there's problems, unintended problems that have wrote, have come up. But we have healthcare here. It's better than Fremont County. We've got OBs here. It's better than a lot of counties in the state. What do you want done? So we sell it. We get money. We take that money and we invest it into Wild Star. Yeah, that was an issue. The state of Wyoming mismanaged our money. We became a a majority stakeholder of Wild Star two. If that fund had collapsed, we would have been holding the bag. It had been organically being drawn down by other holders of that fund. And we were losing money. So we could have left that money there, continued to be the largest holder of that fund. And it is what it is. And we just lose money. Or we could take proactive approach, move that money, take a loss, put it into the funds that we just reviewed today where we're making fantastic returns. And we have actually, and within a few, within the the time period, we made up what we lost where we would have continued to lose. But, you know, we could have left it there, I guess. Whatever. Remember all the other ones. Ah! Zoning. Let's get to the zoning thing. So zoning was given to me because, well, it was a hot potato. Nobody wanted it. And that's one of the things I ran on was because zoning was a mess, just a hot mess with how it was written. There was a lot of problems with it. So it wasn't rewritten. It wasn't anything notorious, no, no back alley, hidden room discussions. It was all out in the open. Uh, there was multiple people that were on the committee that went through the zoning from developers to agriculture. Things were added in there such as solar farms, such as redoing the the adding permissible use for my the extraction data mining. That's in there. That hasn't been an issue yet, but I'm sure it's going to be because somebody's, they're going to want to put a data mine somewhere and this body probably won't allow it to happen. Eh, we don't have the the right study, right, whatever. Even though they say they'll come up with the study and the permit can be contingent upon that. Whatever, you know, we don't need the tax base. State of Wyoming will take care of us with their wonderful job they're doing right now. So, you know, we added that in those in there, data mining, solar. When we had a emergency regulations with the zoning for the solar. So we could have, you know, we we took the best conditions, best restrictions, that best practices throughout the nation and and put them into our zoning, which was not a rewrite. Wasn't, it was just a revision. But whatever. So we had that stuff. The the if if we got paid for it, I I I missed that check. That sucks. So I'm sure that payoff was pretty good. Nothing like that happened. It's ridiculous. So anyways, no nefarious, nothing. It's just what's better best for this county? Can we can we add some for regulations for solar farms so that that we can control and we can we can help the public and the the neighbors in that area and help that development? Yeah, and that's what we did. The mining. Yeah. That's for me. You know what? M R one is a freaking huge swath of land. Goes from Besmer Bend all the way over to can't say it, goes clear over to the end of Hat Six. A lot of that stuff over by Hat Six should be ram. But it's in M R one, so we're restricting those those agricultural producers and and everybody that could utilize their property. So, you know, you add it as a conditional use, then this board would be able to add conditions and restrictions to any extractions. Figured that was a good idea. Didn't realize that we were going to have somebody try to put a gravel mine on the face of the mountain up there on Coats Road, but you know what? There's conditions. We can set any condition we want, basically. It'll be okay. We took those out. So we, not only is it just not allowed, but if if something, you know, anybody wants to do a extraction on the east end there off Hat Six, well, that sucks. Whatever. We're the local government. We can control your property. We can tell you what to do. I like that. Not really. Not at all. Parks. Parks. You know who's been pushing for a statutory board since they got on? Me. I've wanted one ever since. When I got on. I had Eric use, he went to the A G to see if we were following state statute. We weren't. It all came from me. Got paid good on that one, too. Oh, wait, no, I didn't. My mistake. Some of these, this crap that's going, being spewed out there is complete misinformation, misunderstanding. And, you know, there you go. There's pretty much the record straight. But I doubt for everyone, they're still going to say what they want to say, say they're misinformation. That's okay, because I've let you know.
Mr. Coats.
I'll be a little shorter than Jim tonight. So I think you did. So just in brevity, I think the commission made strides tonight. It was rough at times. But as conversations I've had in the community, you know, I think some of what we are doing, some of the disagreements, I think there is some positive value in it because it lets people see that, you know, there is, there are disagreements in government and that we can, at the end of the day, get something done. As Commissioner Laird has told me before, you know, this, we don't want to be a board that does nothing. And so when we can accomplish things, we can accomplish things, even through some disagreement, I think there's positive outset in it. My only rebuttal on the on the solar farm is zoning's in place for a reason. It's set in place for a reason. I would doubt that each individual, large industrial project, would be viewed under the same lens. The requirements are set out, follow the requirements, and it's very hard for us to deny things the way our zoning is set forth. Simply put, do what's required. You get your, you get your permit. As it's a permit, I write. Thank you.
Mr. Laird.
The hospital is a deep issue, that's for sure. And I was on the, I was on the Board of Directors of the Wyoming Medical Center. I was put there by the commissioners in the late eighties. And so I have a lot of insight into the way it was run and the money it was making and what happened. But one of the things that I I keep fighting is, is I know that the past is over with. I can't do anything about the past. What I can do is deal with the present moment. And so one thing I would like to say, we had a lot of employees here tonight, and I didn't get a chance to thank them all for the good work they do for this county. But I want them to know that I appreciate them and that I stand by them because they work hard for Natrona County. Secondly, I'm going to make a commitment to my fellow commissioners and to the people in Natrona County and to my wife. And I'm going to be a gentleman down here. Now, I may disagree with some people. I may vote differently than some people. And I'm going to be a gentleman. And I know these these gentlemen all have the ability to be a gentleman themselves because I've seen it from time to time. It breaks out every now and then, but lately the gentlemanly side has not been seen. And so so if I'm not being a gentleman, I'm, I hope somebody points it out because I really don't want to be in these these kind of battles here. This isn't what the public invited, voted me in to do. And I vote what I believe in my heart of hearts is for the people of Natrona County, period. And I can't undo anything any of these past commissioners did. I suppose we're going to be able to tweak the zoning rules to a certain extent so people can understand them. We can smooth them out. And we can pick good people for these boards. And I hope that's what we do. And I think we've done it so far for the most part. And we've had disagreements on on certain people. And but when the voting's over with, for me, that means it's done. I don't need to go back and rethink it or do anything else. What I look to is the present moment and how I can make things better for the people of Natrona County. If they come in here with a 20,000 person signature of not wanting mining in their housing district, I hear that. People come into me from the west side of town and they don't want to look at 2,000 acres of cha- Chinese machinery that has been left dying, just like these wind turbines have for us all to look at. that has been left dying, just like these wind turbines have for us all to look at and figure out what we're going to do with. Because they're not benefiting, that isn't benefiting Natrona County from what I could see. That's why I voted against that. The people who came in here, I didn't know them. I didn't know, I don't know them from Adam. And, uh, the people that came from Natrona County, I, I knew a lot of them. They voted for me. And when they explained why they didn't want that, my, my real problem with that is, is because that could be a, a huge detriment and then there would be, nobody could pay the damages. Because this company's very smart. They have good lawyers. They come in and apply with what you, what is known as a limited liability company, which means there's no liability. Everything blows up, they walk away from it with all the money they've made. And our people suffer. I saw that. I saw that with the city's fire out there where the city has immunity. And a lot of people's houses burned down and they didn't get compensated for it. And I would like to have seen that the city had insurance for those kinds of things because our people can't afford to rebuild their houses if they, if, if the insurance didn't cover it and if the, if there wasn't enough, uh, of a liability insurance there. So somehow if you're on a city council and you're on a county commission, you need to protect the people. And if people don't like that, that's their problem because I'm going to keep doing it for the whole time I'm on this commission. I'm going to apply the law and I'm going to do it fairly. And they're going to get asked tough, tough questions by, by me. And I'm going to be a gentleman, all you gentlemen. I pledge that to you all, period. The end. Thank you.
I will be more brief. Right now what's going on in Cheyenne, I can honestly say, I don't think anybody has any idea what's going to come out of there until it's done and it's signed. I have never seen so many bills go in so many different direction from the inception to the end as I have this year. And it's almost impossible to keep track of the changes, the amendments, the, uh, completely revamping what the bill started out as to what they are now. And honestly speaking, we have no idea. I don't. I don't think anybody does as far as what's going to come out of there. One thing I will guarantee though is that, um, it will affect us to some degree. No matter what it is, there are going to be some changes that in the statutes that affect us all. And that's something we're going to have to adapt to. Um, whatever those are, we're going to have to adapt to them. With adoptions, um, we move in, we are going to be, we've already started looking at our current zoning. We, our goal is to have some of the revisions completed by the end of the summer so that we can send that out, public notice and everything else, and hopefully have everything signed off by the end of the year. Our legal counsel who has been working with the zoning has found multiple issues with the, with the zoning. There's all kinds of problems with that document, um, that, that need to be fixed. You know, we have things in there where we refer to having a, uh, an application where there is no application. We have things that we have deficiencies in that we need to address. And that's what we're, that's what we're going to work on. So, um, we do plan on making that better so that it's better for the people of the county. It's not really something I want to do. But, uh, Commissioner Coach has graciously volunteered his time to suffer with it along with myself. And so we're going to be working on trying to get some of those things corrected along with our legal counsel and, uh, and have something move forward. So, um, but it's going to be an arduous effort to say the least. I'm not going to say a whole lot more tonight. Um, had a long day already and I appreciate everybody coming.